Okay, we'll get going with our meeting here. We're running behind already, so we'll start off with Joan Evans.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Joan Evans. I work for PFM Asset Management. I am an investment advisor for Wyoming Public Entities. I also do work in Colorado for PFM Asset Management. And join with me on Zoom here, a little picture up on the screen is my colleague Brian Quinn, a managing director with PFM Asset Management. Brian is actually joining us from Michigan today, but he has supported Wyoming, what we call our separately managed portfolios with me for many years here in Wyoming. So I appreciate him joining today. I think he'll add some great context to the conversation. Just to set a little bit of context on our role here in Wyoming, PFM Asset Management is the investment advisor, the administrator, and the marketing agent for the Wyoming Government Investment Fund. And that is one of the local government investment pools here in Wyoming. We also have available the YO Star funds, YO Star 1, YO Star 2, Wyoming Class, Wyoming Government Investment Fund. Those are all considered local government investment pools. Those are created to be short-term cash management tools for Wyoming Public Entities, kind of thinking about where you can place your cash that you might need in the next year for the opportunity to have higher earnings, moving it back and forth between your local bank. Really not the best vehicle for funds that you are not needing longer term, maybe out into that one to five-year space. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that today. Then PFM Asset Management is also an investment advisor for Wyoming Public Entities, separate from, but also tied to the Wyoming Government Investment Fund. So some of our clients are the University of Wyoming, Campbell County, City of Gillette. We also have a school district in Pinedale. And so for entities that want their funds separately managed in their own portfolio, we enter into an agreement with entities to manage those separately for you. So we can talk a little bit about all of those tools and kind of how they apply to your needs as we go through the discussion. So appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. It's my understanding that we want to focus our discussion a little bit around the money that you have currently in YO Star. Am I correct there, Commissioner Laird? Okay, great. We have an example of that within our presentation, but then the discussion can really be very informal and hopefully answer a lot of questions that you have. We always start out any presentation by giving a little bit of context around the economy and how that affects the investments that you have. And so Brian's going to spend a little bit of time on that. We understand that our time with you is limited today, so we will be sure and be mindful of that. Then we'll talk a little bit about portfolio recommendations, talk a little more about PFM Asset Management, and then talk about next steps. So Brian, I'll turn it over for you for a little context around the economy.
Thanks, Joan. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. I'm going to go ahead. The reason why we start with the economy is just to give you some background like in today's terms. The majority of our presentation is meant to be educational. It's meant to be at a high level. This isn't going to get into, you know, granular detail over here. Here's some great ideas to share with you on portfolio recommendations. But we can provide you some broad-skill information. So starting off, the news for the past year has all been about inflation. And I'm going to start with that, but there's a lot more things going on in the market, as you're well aware of, with the second, third, and fourth largest bank failures in the country in our history happened in basically in the last month in March. So that's certainly a big deal. And then the other point that's coming through right now is certainly the debt ceiling and the debate that's happening in Washington DC trying to determine what's the best future for us. That's a significant happening. All of this stuff honestly is kind of on the sidelines relative to what we're talking about today, which is really about developing an investment platform regardless of the economic times and being able to withstand it. So I'll set that as setting the table is the economy. Again, we have been experiencing on the rebound of the pandemic. We have certainly seen a significant growth, rebound both economic activity, the unemployment level is down to 3.4% currently, so that's great news. There's almost two jobs for every one person unemployed, so we're sitting on nearly nine million job openings. And I'm sure you've experienced that in the Toronto County, the difficulty in trying to hire people, you're having to pay top to get them. And this is kind of the background of why there is inflation is a lot of it is related to the bounce back from the pandemic and then also, you know, trying to restore our economy, where a lot of people have just decided, I'll call them baby boomers, have decided just to call quits. They're done with this working environment. So a lot of retired and didn't come back after the pandemic. When you look at some of the contributing factors, one that's near and dear to the state of Wyoming is energy. And you're seeing while the 12-month change is down 6.4%, we're still up very high, rebounding again from the pandemic. And you look at the middle column, the weighting of these, the top pieces of weight on the CPI is certainly shelter is almost a third of it. So you think of your housing cost and whatnot. And I will tell you that this number is largely estimated when the CPI, this is not something that you can just point a number to and say. It's usually done by survey, so it's a little bit, there's a little bit of potential error in that number. But it is almost 3% of the, or nearly 5% overall inflation. This was done in March, and if you look back at this, if you look forward to, I'm sorry, in April, we're down about 4.9%. A lot of these components are still running in the same track. The trend line hasn't changed. Food, energy, things of this nature are certainly contributing. And so we're starting to see all the impact of the Fed movements. The Fed has moved dramatically, the strongest movement up in over 50 years in interest rates. So going from basically zero to 2.25%, up now at this point, 500 basis points or 5% in roughly 15, 16 months. So that's a significant jump up, and it is part of the reason why we saw some of these bank failures, is that jump up impacted them. It impacts you whenever you're holding fixed income securities and interest rates rise. Your bond portfolio, let's say it was purchased at 1% and now the current rate is 5%. That is not good for you because then you have unrealized losses. And you can realize those losses by selling out of securities, but that's a difficult thing to stomach because you'll be losing part of your principal in that process. So looking at some of the news headlines going forward, there's becoming a growing disparity between what the Fed is saying and what the implied Fed funds rate is. And we're showing two different dots, lines here. One is from April of '23, the other one is May of '23. And you're seeing because the Fed moved up recently that the dot plot is actually, I'm sorry, not dot plot, but the expectation for Fed funds has kind of gone up a little bit. And if you looked at this and you plotted over these two lines, the third line, the Fed line, it would be mark believes because the Fed wholly believes that they're going to have to keep interest rates at this higher level through the end of 2023. Whereas the market is saying, no, we're going to have to take some cuts over the, before the end of 2023 for the purpose of trying to stimulate the economy because the Fed moved too fast, too hard, and we're not going to get the soft landing that we're looking for. So that's part of the news here. One of the other big pieces is showing this expectation of lower interest rates in the future, is we can look at the two-year Treasury. And this gives several different points of view. The dotted line on this shows the December 31, 2022. The firm blue line is of May 8th of 2023. And the lighter blue section shows you the range of where the yield curve has been over the past one year. What's important to note is you get paid higher interest rates. So you look at the overnight Fed funds rate between 5 and 5 1/4, close to 5, 5 1/4 really. And then you go out in time, and then the five-year at this point in time, this is May 8th, was 349. So you drop significantly. You lose over a point and a half, 150 basis points rather, in that time period between 0 and 5 years. So the expectation, the market expectation, is that rates will have to go lower, and in particular to get to more of a normalized yield curve. A normalized yield curve is upward sloping. We'd have to see a dramatic fall in the overnight rates. So as Joan talked about earlier, WIGIT is a wonderful instrument for liquidity purposes, meaning, you know, for short-term investing. But certainly to take advantage and to hold on to some of this yield, we are recommending to clients to buy, buy out on the yield curve, even though it doesn't make conventional wisdom, any kind of sense to buy at a lower interest rate. But our belief that interest rates will go lower, and they'll go, they'll have to go lower fairly quickly as the Fed tries to save the economy in the future. So why to make you aware, that's why we're talking about the economy, is this is kind of a dramatic time period that we're going through. So the belief is that Fed funds have peaked, that we've reached that terminal point, and that the future is for lower interest rates in the future. Let's try to take that material that we just talked about and apply it into the, you know, the escrow sort of core portfolio. Our belief is that we try to match your cash flows to the instruments that we can invest in. And so we try to do a cash, cash flow analysis to understand when you're going to need funds. And let's just use $100 million as an example. If I know I'm only going to use $10 million over the next 12 months, then I can go ahead and carve out that $10 million to be in very safe, very liquid instruments such as WIGIT, for example. I could use short-term instruments for the short-term funds. And then I look out over the, you know, the core portfolio. Those are assets that are typically invested out more than one year, and I can set aside different types of instruments for that. So then I'm using corporate bonds, I'm using US Treasuries, super nationals. All the tools that are available to us become a lot more, you know, a lot more useful when we're investing longer in term, longer term. And I hope that kind of makes sense. So we're trying to match the time period with the instrument that we're choosing to invest in. So what are the tools that we have to use? These are the four primary tools for fixed income investors. I can choose to extend duration, which means I'm going to go out longer. And when the yield curve is normalized, I usually pick up a premium over short-term interest rates. And that plays out over history. That is the typical standard for US Treasury yield curve. We're currently not in that place, but again, we are recommending to clients to lock in some of that yield because our expectation is for lower rates in the future. The second piece, diversification. We've all heard of that with regards to our personal portfolio. It certainly plays through in the fixed income world. These, all these securities don't react in the marketplace same. And so we don't want to have all of our eggs in one basket. Diversification helps flatten out some of the ups and downs by, if we chose to lock into one instrument, there's a lot of ups and downs related to that instrument. So we try to diversify to offset some of those effects. Segmentation is what I was talking about in the previous slide, is we try to break out and say, short-term investments. We typically use WIGIT, commercial paper, repo products, short-term bills, US Treasury bills, things of that nature in order to fit those types of investments. And then longer term, we look at mortgage backs, corporate, corporate bonds, super nationals, agency securities, US Treasuries. And then the last thing is active management, is utilizing what we know, that there's an ebb and flow to yield spreads. And when spreads are really tight and there's not a lot of value to holding spread product, think corporate notes, for instance, if spreads are really tight, then why are we holding a bunch of corporate notes? What we'll try to do is migrate more to US Treasuries to basically get some dry powder going. And then as spreads widen, then we'll jump on board and try to catch some of that value that's received by buying spread product. So I hope that makes some sense. And then also, we're trying to find different points on the yield curve that are value. So everything isn't, but we show these yield curves, we show this kind of flat line, but that's not reality. Reality is it's a bumpy line. There's ups and downs to two years, different than the three years versus the five year. So we're trying to utilize the yield curve to find the best value. And that's why you have, that's why you look for an expert in this area to be able to work through the portfolio and move with the tide, if you will. Before I jump into this, I wanted to see if there's any questions about the, this general piece is really important to understand, is segmentation, utilizing all the tools that we have available under the Wyoming statutes. Is all that making sense so far?
And Brian, before you continue, I'll just point out that we are going to just use the YO Star balance as an example. But this really could be laid over any other investments that you have or any other cash balances. But for illustrative purposes today, and since that was really started our conversation, we'll just use, we'll just use the state treasurer's deposits to give you a little demonstration on the asset allocation and portfolio.
That's a great, great point.
We have a question. Just a second, Brian, we have a question.
So on this page where it says growth of $100 million portfolio, you're not talking about our $100 million?
Commissioner Laird.
That's on the other side of the...
On Slide 12. Yes. We are giving you an illustration of a $100 million portfolio.
So you're not talking about our money. This is some other...
It's a hypothetical. It could be your money. You have close to $100 million right now in the state treasurer's pool. I believe YO Star 2 is the majority of that. But if you, let's say you did not have it there, and it was in this sample portfolio, we're giving you an illustration of what that would look like.
Yeah, I can explain it as I go through a little bit further. We're utilizing that one, the building sale funds as an example. But it's certainly all the information we're going to talk about relates to your full operating funds. We're still staying within the Wyoming statutes, and we're trying to apply this as an example. But it certainly is applicable for the building sale funds. And I'm using this because it is very straightforward. You currently have about, let's just say, $100 million invested. It's in the YO Star 2. The net yield at the point in time, we're looking at March 31, was 1.56%. The duration is unknown. So YO Star 2 is not known for a lot of transparency. It's difficult to read through what exactly is in that portfolio, how long it'll be, as well as trying to get out of the portfolio. If you chose to liquidate, it's difficult because it will be a point in time, similar to trying to leave a mutual fund. You won't know until you've sold off to understand what kind of loss you would be at. And I'm assuming it's going to be a loss because that yield is below market right now. Let's take a look at...
Let me ask you, let me ask you this. Is there anything in this presentation that tells us about how much money we started with and what's happened to it and where it is now? Or is this just all hypothetical?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird?
Yes, ma'am.
We decided not to include that information in the presentation. I think, Nick, can you help me out with that? In providing detailed statements about what your position is in YO Star 2, what your market value is, that information, we decided not to include that today because you wanted to wait on that, is my understanding.
So, yeah, pass this down a little bit. This is our positioning with our funds right now. And just, it's very basic. It's nothing special or pretty or anything like that. But it is all of our funds out there, the investment pools, not the CDs, but just the investment pools. And just trying to show you all what exposure we have as far as being in one fund, this much. This is absolutely ridiculous, especially at a 1.5% rate.
I would agree with you.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of order, it seems that on our agenda, we have this presentation from noon to 1:00, and then at 1:00 o'clock, an investment discussion, which is maybe a little bit more...
To that point.
Better time to talk about the spreadsheet that, or the stuff, the fact that Mr. Millen passed out. And then if we have some questions for Nick. Nick, are you planning on being, being here for our 1:00 discussion? I think that'd be helpful to us. It might answer some of Commissioner Laird's questions. But it seems to me that what the presentation is today is a hypothetical illustration of what can be done so that we can make a more informed decision when we have our discussions on investments. So I think maybe we can move forward.
And basically, that $1 million, if I'm...
Hundred?
Or $100 million is close to what we have and close to what we were talking about with YO Star 2 and 1. But also, they got to have some number, so even number is so much easier to work with than $100 million, 937 cents and whatever, you know, so.
Thank you for this, Commissioner. Appreciate this. It puts more into my mind about this. Because I was triggered by this one page where they have the graph where they start out at $170 million and it drops down to $100 million. So somebody hypothetically lost $70 million, and I was hoping it wasn't us. Of course, I knew it wasn't.
So let's let them finish the presentation, and then we'll have questions at the end. Thank you.
Chairman Frill, thank you. Brian, go ahead.
Okay. So now what we're doing then is taking that same $100 million. And what's important to understand is now we're going in today's dollars. If we had $100 million in cash and we're going to invest today, this is something that we would look at doing. And again, this doesn't, this is a hypothetical, meaning it doesn't necessarily comply with your investment policy. It does comply with Wyoming statutes. And so we built a portfolio and said, okay, this is the way we probably structure. And this is a zero-to-five-year benchmark or zero-to-five-year strategy. So it would have a portion, in this case, because of the high short-term interest rates, would try to take advantage of that five, nearly 5% overnight rate that we can get through WIGIT. Almost a quarter of the portfolio would be invested in the zero-to-one-year bucket. Then the one-to-two-year, again, because the yield curve is inverted right now, again, trying to take advantage of those short-term interest rates. And then piling on top of it, though, is looking at the two-year, three-year, four-year, and five-year, and investing out longer as well to lock in and make sure that we've kind of smoothed the amount of earnings that we can have over a period of time. So the gross yield...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question just on the zero-to-five and why we're not looking at zero-to-20-year. Is that because we ought to go back to and reassess where we're at every five years? Is that why none of these materials, and just kind of typically on governmental funds, we're not looking at a plus-five-year horizon?
I'll let Brian take it, but I will say that a lot of the duration will be based on your investment policy. So many public entity investment policies limit duration to five years. It doesn't mean we can't go longer than that. And a lot of that is based on your needs for having your investments available to you. Brian, any additional context around that?
Yeah, I think that you've answered it appropriately. We're starting with a, again, hypothetical to show you what we can do. But it's all based upon, at the end of the day, would be a customized solution based upon what you believe this money, how long this money will be around. So if we understood that this is more core funds that will not be touched for X number of years, then certainly the bigger value is to go out longer. Because as I said, if you look at a one-to-10-year type strategy, is better than a one-to-five, which is better than a one-to-three, which is better than overnight funds. And that's, there's history to show that that plays out, again, because the yield curve is typically upward sloping, and we get better value for going out longer. But it's all predicated upon what your, you know, policy would end up being, looking like. Would it allow corporate bonds? Would it allow longer duration? That's all the pieces that would have to fall in place for us to customize this specifically to your needs.
Thank you.
I hope that makes a little more sense.
So, Mr. Chairman, to just follow up on Mr. Nicolason's question, when I looked at that five years, one of the things I thought is, because I'm not really positive on what Wyoming law is about one commission binding commissions for the next 25 years, I don't think we can do that. I think that we're limited possibly to four years. So the issue I would have is if there's some emergency happen where they needed $50 million and it's in some long-term investment, what is the penalty if they have to take that money out? Because right now, the law with the treasurers is, is they have to have the money, or they can get to the money within 24 hours if the county needs it. So could you address that issue?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, you, if you needed to liquidate funds out of a managed portfolio, that can be done. You would just have market risk with that. So if you were in a situation where your portfolio was experiencing an unrealized loss at the time, you would have to, you'd have to take that loss if you cashed it in. The benefit of staying in your portfolio is that you're riding that out, and we're locking those funds up to a term based on a decision at a point in time, thinking that won't happen. It doesn't mean you can't access your funds, just may have, it might be to your detriment to access them at the time.
Do you know whether it's lawful for us to tie it up for 20 years?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I don't think we're talking about tying it up. I think it's more of the investment philosophy.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, so we're not tying it up. It can be withdrawn. It's our legal ability to invest it on whatever horizon we can appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Nicolason. The issue, though, I think, that has been held by really, really conservative people is, is that if you put the money in the bank, what you lose is the interest rate. You wouldn't lose the principal if this thing charted like their example of $170 million dropping to $100. So we, so when I decide where I'm going to put money and how much, I always think about what happens if the market takes a crash? What happens if the market takes a crash? And you're like my old grandfather who had a whole bunch of cash under his bed, because he went through the depression where he lost everything. he lost everything. So, I always ask those questions, because I was raised by depression people. Thank you.
Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, these are all very good points, and something that would have to be determined before your investment advisor goes ahead and does the investing, because it's really important to know, uh, worst-case scenarios, and then would you be able to get liquidity when you need it? It's, these are, we're talking about buying marketable securities, treasuries, agencies, et cetera, they're all very easy to get out of, uh, but as Joan said, there's market risk associated with it, because if we bought it with a coupon of 2%, and now the market's 5%, there's a 3% difference between those two, and, uh, the one that's going to buy your, your, your security isn't interested in 2%, they want 5, so you're going to have to sell at a discount in order to accomplish that liquidity. So, making sure that we're, we're really setting up the portfolio for success means we're taking into account your cash flow needs in the future, and that, that's part of the, again, the customization that would be required in order to, to accomplish that task. Um, what, what I wanted to do here is just demonstrate to you the different things that happen, just going to your point, uh, when interest rates fall and when interest rates rise, there's the inverse relationship. When, when rates are on the rise, uh, your bond portfolio, bond prices go down, and when interest rates are falling, your bond prices go up. So, this is just a graphic to demonstrate what happens when you have a, you know, a short-term portfolio, a three-month treasury bill, or a medium, a one-to-three-year, or a one-to-five-year, the impact of duration on the bond crisis. So, if we're looking at this, the average total return during these rate cycles, uh, during falling environments, the longer I have that bond, the better it goes, and so you're seeing at the, the bottom, the one-to-five year does really well. If you look at, let's, let's skip over the stable and go over to rising rates, and you're seeing that, oh, this does not do well when rates are, are, are going up, uh, whereas the three-month treasury bill does really well, 216 versus .11. So, I, it, it's just trying to show you that each of these perform differently, and, and again, the strategy that we employ is really critical, uh, when we're, we're dealing with these ups and downs, the volatility, the fixed income market. It is fairly basic, as I said, you know, the, the inverse relationship between bond prices and interest rates, but it's important to, to make sure we're, we're going into this with our eyes wide open, uh, and not locking up your portfolio too long when you're going to need the money at a certain point. Uh, so our, our understanding of that is going to be critical. Um, one of the things that we, you know, we, at the turnover, we're currently not seeing a whole lot of is the use of the, the corporate sector, and wanted to, to inform you that with PFM Asset Management, we've been doing this for over 40 years, we've never taken a credit loss for a customer. Um, and that's, that's, the, you know, past performance does not predict the future, but I want to tell you that because we're focused in on the public sector, we do a lot of analysis to make sure. Uh, we have over 10 people that are evaluating all the corporate securities, that we're, we're making our, our credit list very tight to make sure we're going to get paid back on any kind of risk that we take. So, again.
So, I have, I have a question.
We have a question, Brian.
So, that's your credit team, right, those 10 individuals?
Correct.
And my, uh, impression is that the Wyoming State Treasurer's Office doesn't have a credit team, um, uh, associated with YOstar, uh, investments, is that your understanding?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Don't have any trade in the net?
Yeah, Commissioner Nicolason, I, I am not certain, I believe it's just staff in the, um, Treasurer's Office, but we really would be ill-prepared to answer that. I think that'd be a better question for them, more so just can talk about what, the resources that we have internally.
Great, thanks.
But what, what's important here is, again, uh, risk mitigation, trying to make sure that we're, we're looking at this from the full view of, of credit risk, and you're looking at some of those allocation guidelines, uh, that we adhere to, it just makes common sense. So, we didn't have any of the three banks, uh, that went down on our, on our approved credit list, uh, and that's purposeful. These, these banks were producing a better return, I mean, those, those were, were higher-returning-type securities because they were riskier entities, were, we wouldn't put those on our list because they were high-risk and they could end up defaulting. And the ones that ended up losing, thank goodness, the depositors didn't lose, they were able to transfer that risk over to another bank. But if you were holding equity in this firm, or if you're holding credit in this firm, uh, you are, you are not getting your full money back, uh, at best. In fact, the, the investors have zero return, uh, the creditors have a percentage of their total investment available. So.
Question.
Want to make sure you're aware that, that we take this credit business very seriously, uh, 10 people doing that, we have a 30-person trading desk, um, we trade over $200 billion nationally, and then specifically within the investment guidelines of Wyoming statutes, we trade nationally about $3 billion a day. Why is that important, why am I bringing that up? It, it's not to, to beat my chest at all, but it really is about getting value out of execution. So, when we go out to market, we're buying a 100-million-dollar chunk of a security, we're not buying at the retail level, which might be 500,000 or a million dollars, uh, which some of our competitors would be, would be able to, to reach.
I have a question, is this money insurable?
We're so sideful.
Is this money insurable? Could we insure this money, so if something bad happens, we're insured?
None, none of these securities, when we're, when we get outside of the FDIC, nothing is insured, but everything is backed by that individual security. So, if you buy a US Treasury, you're backed by the US Treasury, if I buy a corporate bond from John Beer, I'm backed by the credit of John Beer. So, you have, the, the instrument is the security behind the, the investment, um, but you don't have FDIC insurance, insurance. Uh, you could argue the only pieces that are, that are really insured would be the US Treasury.
Okay. I think my microphone is not on anymore, so I will just talk in my outside voice. Um, and I would just follow up, Commissioner Laird, with your question, the local government investment pools in Wyoming are not FDIC insured, so Wyoming Class, YOstar, uh, Wyoming Government Investment Fund, they, they are, they're, these funds are rated, so, for instance, Wyoming Government Investment Fund is a AAA-plus rated fund, so, any, any security in that, uh, fund has to be rated, uh, it's a high-quality investment to, uh, meet the compliance for the investments in that pool.
Can insurance be purchased, though, if we decided we wanted to purchase it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, no, not for a pool. No, not for a pool. All right, should we move on? Okay, I'm going to skip, um, over the next couple of slides really quickly to leave plenty of time for, for questions. We've talked a lot about what we do here in Wyoming, PFM Asset Management. We do have on page 17, you can see that we, um, the Wyoming Government Investment Fund, which is now this, uh, these are March figures, we're actually now just over, um, close to $2 billion in, in liquid funds, but then we also separately manage accounts in Wyoming, like I mentioned, that are outside the pool that are managed specifically. When we were talking previously about a core portfolio, that's what we're talking about to you, that's one option available to you, in addition to participating in pools, in addition to, um, you know, having money in your, in your local banks. We are, um, as investment advisors, we are fiduciaries, so there's a difference between us and what a broker-dealer might do for you, and I think it's important to understand the roles of different individuals that you work with. And so, as fiduciaries, we are always going to act exclusively in your best interest, we are not paid, uh, based on, on trades, we have to disclose fees to you. Our fee structure, um, is, uh, always, uh, based on the total of assets under management, so if you asked us to manage 100 million dollars of your funds in a core portfolio, we would give you an estimate of what we felt like, um, our fees would be for that, and that is a base fee, we're not paid on trades. If you participate in the pool, in the Wyoming Government Investment Fund, there is no cost to that, the, the rates that are published are net rates, so for instance, 4.97 is the rate today on the pool, that is what your money is earning while that is in the pool, but that rate changes daily, so if rates start to go down, you're going to see, um, you know, the interest that you're able to earn on those pools start to go down.
So, I'd just like to make a comment about the insurance, because I've dealt a lot with insurance companies over the years, and what I find is they'll insure anything, and when they won't insure something, that means they don't have that much faith in what might happen to them if somebody else in the pool goes down. So, I'm just trying to figure out, because I, this isn't our money, this is the taxpayer of Natrona County's money, it was their hospital that got sold, that's where the funds come from. So, I think that I, as a commissioner at least, feel a duty to the constituents to examine all these options, so if somebody comes back and listens to this, this meeting, they will know that somebody asked the tough questions about how safe these taxpayers' money really is, and so that's the purpose of my question, just so you know that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, uh, can't, that's only with money, that's what we do, and so, we are, as Brian mentioned, uh, that's the first thing on mind, then yield, because of the safety component, we're talking about, what's the pool rate, that's going to be the quality of the investments that are being purchased on your behalf if you're in a pool. So, you have money in your local banks that are FDIC insured, you have money in other places that aren't FDIC insured, but they have some other backing, either a rated pool or a portfolio, uh, that's rated to a benchmark, something like that. So, definitely, safety is the number-one priority for us when we're dealing with public funds, it's absolutely top of mind.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, I think, just wrapping it up, so we leave, we leave time for questions. Uh, if you look at page 20, sorry, I'm doing very hard on microphones today.
This is really just a simple illustration of what we've been talking about, you start at the bottom, you're looking at your bank accounts, your FDIC-backed transactions, things where you're, you're looking at your payroll, your payables clearing, your general checking, then you might be using another liquidity pool that's there on the middle of the page on page 20, something like a, a Wyoming Government Investment Fund, YOstar, some kind of pool where you can pool your money to earn higher interest until you need it for payroll, until you need it for your payables, and then the top bar is really, uh, the core portfolio discussion. If you determine that you have funds that you can set aside to be separately managed, that's what we're talking about there, uh, a core investment account with separate custody, where we measure ourselves to a benchmark based on your, uh, investment policy, based on your anticipated cash flow needs. Uh, so, so this is really just talking about all of the tools that are available to you, and how we could assist you based on, uh, what, what your desires and recommendations are. Brian, do you have anything to add there?
The process is definable, uh, you know, to, to go through and establish this, it's an investment policy review, it's the cash flow analysis, it's then the segmentation of portfolio into, you know, short and long-term typically, uh, you might have different allocations that you wanted to identify, but certainly trying to really customize and nail down when you'll be utilizing the money is, is really helpful in determining how we would invest it. And then, obviously, the investment policy would guide us on, on setting up the portfolio, and it isn't a simple buy-and-hold process, it is actively managing to try to produce better returns overall and protecting you from any kind of changes that are going on. So, uh, clearly, understanding your needs is, is what this is all about, and again, it doesn't matter if you choose us or somebody else, this process is a solid way to set up your investment platform, so that you're going to be able to withstand ups and downs of the economy because you've made good decisions upfront. It takes a lot of work, uh, it, there's no kidding, aside from that, it takes a lot of work, but once that, that setup is done, and then every quarter, we're coming back and providing you with updates on how we're doing relative to the benchmark, as well as receiving feedback from you on other changes in cash flows, other changes in needs. Uh, and honestly, there's, there's, there's going to be change in, in the board as well, and maybe the direction does swivel some way, but we will be, because of that feedback loop that we have set up, we're able to, to, to be able to adjust the portfolio to whatever Natrona County needs. Hope that helps.
And I want to say, too, just at, being able to ask the right questions about where your money is at the time. If, if you have it in a fund where you can't get it out because of circumstances that really will be, you know, not anticipated, uh, you know, that's not helping. And so, if you think about something, uh, like a pool, like the Wyoming Government Investment Fund, we follow GASB, uh, the, the generally accepted accounting standards, not all pools do, uh, that ties right back to liquidity, so things like getting your money out. GASB requires the Wyoming Government Investment Fund to have a minimum of 10% of the entire fund available overnight. So, if a, if a Wyoming public entity wants to get their money out, they can get it out, 30% of the fund has to be a seven-day liquidity. So, these are all things that, if wherever you're putting your money, you want to be able to ask the right questions, and those are things that, you know, we can help you with as, from the experience that we have in, in helping public entities.
Sure. Um, just a couple of questions, if you don't mind, please. Uh, in slide, page 14, whatever that is, where you're talking about the different philosophies, the, the ratings, uh, and the categories, do you guys go down to triple B a lot, or, or where do you stay mainly with your investments?
So, triple B is the, the base or the bottom of the investment grade, uh, investments, and that is about as far as we'll go. Um, typically, for, for governmental entities, because of the safety concerns, we're looking at north of there, and you can certainly constrain that through your investment policy. Um, so, we, we have clients that, that go through the full range, uh, and then certainly the Wyoming statutes will, will also keep us curbed inside as well. But think of that policy as, as the, you know, the rails from which we stay within, um, trying to obviously be mindful, first and foremost, about safety, and then, secondly, making sure there's enough money when you need it, and then, thirdly, looking at that return as, as the component of, of driving, you know, programmatically, things that you're trying to accomplish at the county, it's going to be driven off the earnings that we produce off this portfolio, so trying to make best use of the money.
Right, so basically, the, the, to use your term, rails, the, the rating, triple A, A, double A, whatever, those are the rails that you set up to, everything's got risk and exposure, those are the rails that you're basically saying are, is an acceptable range that you're trying to stay within, correct? Kind of in answer, I think you went away, nope, he's there, kind of in answer to you.
Yeah.
As far as the insurance or F, FDIC or anything like that, it's, 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 you're following, trying to follow those triple A ratings to, in order to mitigate or minimize your risk and exposure, correct?
Correct, and then.
In a long nutshell, that, that's kind of what I got out of it.
Yeah, but your policy could be more restrictive.
I'd like to make a comment to Commissioner Millen's comment.
And say it's, it's double A or higher.
Commissioner Millen.
But I want to make sure you're aware, it's, it's up to you to, to really define those, those rails.
Commissioner Millen, my whole thought is, is where is the safest place to put our money, and then what do we make on that money?
Well, a mason jar's in your backyard.
Well, that could be, that, my grandfather would say that, uh, but that safety, uh, Wyoming people want their money safe.
And that's kind of what I'm saying, is, is if we, for whatever reason, accepted triple B as our, our baseline of, of, hey, just go, do whatever, we wouldn't be very, we wouldn't be treating people's money very well.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
But if we stay within double A or triple A, or just stay within triple A, then we're, we're, we're putting those guardrails up that are going to keep us at the highest standard, and like. And like I said, while you can't minimize all risk or exposure, you're doing everything you can by accepting only triple A.
Mr. Chairman, Brian, can you give me an approximate percentage for Wyoming governmental entities whose funds you manage that are, that have established investment rails or guidelines, parameters that are at a, that either include or exclude a triple B rating? So are there any that have said, we're not going to go even to a triple B? Help me understand, if you would, what other Wyoming governmental entities have, have done in terms of those parameters with your firm?
That, that's a great question. So the, there are clients that have it permissible in their investment policy. They, they incorporated the, you know, to allow for corporate bonds. They have a limit of A or better, but they've chosen at this point to not invest in corporate bonds because they wanted to go through further analysis to, to really, again, constrain the investment, you know, to, to a certain degree. We have others that are, are allowing A or better.
We're having problems.
You're frozen. I'll just take on to that. I mean, really, it's a, it's an ongoing conversation with you start someplace and then you build a comfort level with your portfolio. And at any time, you know, you can, you can make changes in your investment policy. You can become more restrictive. We have some client, you know, the ability to, for Wyoming public entities to, to use corporate notes, I think it was in 2016 the laws changed, but that doesn't mean all entities go there. So, or they limit it to a certain percentage of their portfolio. So it's really, most are very conservative, and we support that.
Another second question. Segmentation practice or ladder practice, it's my understanding, you set, when you set that up, as those come to maturity, whether it's the short term or the midterm or long term, that principle, generally, you can do whatever, but generally, you take that principle from the midterm after it hits its maturity, then you roll it back into another midterm. And it's just an ongoing process so that you're never, everything's short term, never everything long term, but you've got that balance out there and you're able to capture. Or if, if your midterm come in and it, and things are really poor, the rates are poor at that point, you can sit on it for a second or for a little while and then move it forward when they start coming back.
Brian, we're talking now about maturities within the portfolio, so sorry, we digress from corporate, corporate notes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Sorry about that. I apologize.
Commissioner Millen's question was really about how the portfolio is rebalanced. You know, if we have maturities and depending on the rate environment, kind of how all of that is rebalanced.
Using the segmentation process, right?
You think the segmentation process.
Yep. Yeah. So talking specifically about the core portfolio, it lets us use zero to five years, the, the strategy. What we do is we're trying to maintain within a, a, a pretty identifiable range of where the benchmark is. Let's say the benchmark is 2.5 years duration. We'll stay in a relevant range around that because you, you've identified that as the strategy that we should be using. And then as the maturity, as the maturity occurs, we're looking to keep on rebalancing every time that portfolio goes through. And at times, the portfolio could move to a, a little bit too long and will sell off of a security to make sure that we're, we're maintaining the duration that we'd like to see. And for instance, in this, this past year, we, we reduced duration in order to allow the portfolio to run up with these, these interest rate hikes. And now we're getting to a duration neutral time period where we believe that the rates have kind of peaked out. And in fact, we will likely move in, in a, in a little bit, we'll probably move to a longer duration to hold on to some of that yield. So we're looking at the, the market elements to make that determination, but we do stay within a fairly narrow band on the duration relative to the, the established strategy. So I, I hope that helps, but, but, but we don't, we don't just keep a bunch of securities at the, the three-year level, for instance. We'll have a range between one to five, for instance, or zero to five in this case. And then, then as they mature, we're always looking to replace and identify where duration should be relative to the marketplace.
And last question, maybe, from me, maybe. Sorry about that, sir.
Yes, because I have one myself.
So looking at the investment strategies that, that the banks that are having problems right now, how do you, what strategy did they use that, that really led, kind of led them to the issues that they're having? And how do you all try to, to steer away from that?
Well, I, I'll tell you, the big difference for them is they made a plan, they bought U.S. Treasuries out long. There's nothing, there's no risk involved with the, the actual underlying instruments. But like I said, when rates go up really high, and what they had was a, a case where they needed all their money, they had a $40 billion run on the bank in one day. And that's, that's, that's the new world that banks are facing. So they had to sell out of those securities prematurely and take significant losses in order to provide the liquidity to fund that $40 billion. That's, that's not the scenario that, that most governmental entities are in, and I'm going to suggest.
Okay. Real quick, just keep that in mind for our next discussion.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on slide 17, you have representative clients listed, University of Wyoming City, Gillette, Campbell County, and Sublet County School District. I would assume there are other Wyoming governmental entities, but of, of those, I think my question is, with an eye toward diversification, do you manage 100% of their portfolios or half of their portfolios? Because as I see it, we have some options here. Right now, we're pretty heavy in YO Star. And I think we're too heavy, but that's not for you at this point. So my, my question is, what are other governmental entities doing in Wyoming? Are they kind of spreading it out to reduce that risk through the diversification of investment companies, managers?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Nicolason, what we do, when we're working with the entity, we work with you to identify a portion of your overall budget or funds that you want to have managed. So when we're talking about a managed account, let's just use Campbell County as an example. Campbell County has money in a variety of different places, their local banks, they may have it in a couple of different pools, that they have set aside a particular amount of money that they've determined they don't need liquid, that they can set aside as an investment in a, you know, in a one to five, like we're talking about a core portfolio, that they want invested on their behalf. So we are managing for them separately. And they have funds in other places, but, but that particular core amount, they have entered into an agreement for us to act as their investment advisor to manage that portion. So it's not like a situation where we're coming in saying, okay, we need all your money in one place, and now PFMS of Denver is going to work with you to manage it all. Not, not, not necessarily the case at all. So let's just use your, your close to $100 million in your YO Star account, YO Star two account. Maybe you determine that that is money that you could set aside and not need liquid. So you would say to us, this is hypothetical, we want to work with you, PFMS Asset Management, to develop a strategy to manage this portfolio of the, of the county's funds. The other funds, maybe you're doing, you know, whatever with those, that'll, you know, perfectly fine. It's not a requirement of ours that we manage them all. Does that make sense?
Sure.
For instance, the University of Wyoming is more comprehensive. I would say we've got the majority of their funds as assets under management, other than their liquid. Well, we have a lot of their liquidity as well. We're not talking about the foundations money, but more the operating expenses of the university. So it really is just based on your needs. But again, identifying what part of your overall funds that you want separately managed. And not putting a liquidity account, we're not talking about a bank account, something like that.
I have a question, and then a kind of a semi-question. Would you be able to take this document that says how much money we have? And we see what it's done. Would you be able to take that and tell us, if you had this two and a half years ago or whenever they sold the hospital, would you be able to take that and tell us what we would have if we had to put it with you today? Seems like it would be easy to do.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, yes, we could run a historical analysis.
I'd, I'd like to see that if it's not too big of a deal, because then it would be something I could show the constituents to say, look, here's what your money did here. Here's what your money would have done there if we had it there at that, at this time. The second thing is, who is Eileen Hill?
That's RIT.
That's RIT. That's RIT person? I thought, I wondered, it sounded like a familiar.
Commissioner Millen.
Mr. Chairman, you may have all the information.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Laird, I would say, you know, hindsight's 2020, right? We all look back and say, darn, we should have done this. I think the important thing really moving forward is developing a strategy and, and you determining, you know, up, let's just say your $100 million, are you going to need it right now? Are you going to spend it in a year or less? Is it something you can set aside? And thinking about a comprehensive way to look at managing your funds where you're not trying to time the market, because we never recommend that you time the market. We use the information that we have to make the best decisions.
Well, I'm not timing the market. What I want to know is what would have happened had we done it then, and where would we be now, so I could have an idea?
That, that request is a little unfair because a lot of the money that is in YO Star two at this time was actually moved after it had been into YO Star one and in class. It was all shortly moved just before. When was it moved, Nick? I don't remember. It's like about a half a year, a year before this new board set. It wasn't that long ago. So in the interest of, and the radon, that was pretty high, and so that's why that was moved.
All I'm asking is just to see, I understand there's all of these little in and out.
I'm just saying, a snapshot of what's going on right now.
What would have happened if you had put it with them two years ago? That's all I want to know.
Right. But that wouldn't have been a snapshot a year ago.
Commissioner Laird, my only concern with that is that it's incomplete hypothetical, which is, we would need to give them our investment philosophy, I would think, in order so that they can plug in the numbers, because otherwise, you know, they, they could put in the riskiest investments. I mean, I, I don't know if you're giving them enough information so that they can actually give you that number.
Well, maybe we should ask them, but it's just a hypo, you can change the hypothetical, Mr. Nicolason. My hypothetical is really simple.
To be accurate, you'd have to give the amounts into the funds, to the rates, through every month from when we did whatever.
All they do is look and see what we had from then to now.
That's what I'm saying.
And if they would have had it, how, how we, if we were going to buy what they want to sell us, what would it be now? That's all I want to know, because I think our people would want it.
Right. But that's what I'm saying, it's going to be a lot of homework for you guys, kind of to, if Nick gives you all the data of where everything was throughout the years, I don't know how far back you want to go.
But it seems like you guys are arguing for them. I would rather have them tell me. She said she could do it. I would like to see it done. I, I can't vote on this, first of all, until I see that something like that, because I don't have the information. Now, think about it just a minute, Jim. And then I don't know how much money we need to set aside that's liquid, because I know we have a lot of problems at our, at our jail and a bunch of other places, Mr. Nicolason, where I'm going to make some suggestions on how much money maybe we should have liquid to take care of problems that we're having in this building, all of our buildings, really.
If we could allow them to finish the presentation, we will go into discussion as far as investments go. That is the next thing on the list that you're already 10 minutes behind on. So please allow them to finish, and let's quit arguing at this point.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I will just say that what, what I believe we could do is show a historical, if we, if we had a managed portfolio of X amount of dollars from 2015 to, or 2020, 2012 to 2022, what the returns on a one to five benchmark portfolio would be. But again, you know, you have to kind of, I don't know that looking back is, is really the best answer, but, but again, looking forward. So, Mr. Chairman, if there is a request that comes out of your meeting, please let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll look at my colleagues to see if we can accommodate you. I'll just wrap it up today. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I know Brian would say the same thing if, if he were still online. You know, we're happy to follow up with you on next steps and answer any follow-up questions that you may have. And, you know, work with you as a partner as you make these important decisions about public funds here in Nitrona County. So thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for adjusting your schedule. You really appreciate it.
No, no problem at all. Thank you.
I would just comment, Mr. Chairman, I've had other banks do exactly what I'm requesting them to do, and it wasn't any problem.
And that's fine, Dallas. We are letting them do a presentation.
Well, I'm just giving you the information.
I, I get that, but we're getting ready to have that discussion now.
Perfect.
Thank you so much.
All right. Now we'll move into the investment discussion.
So, Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Millen could maybe give us just a little bit of background on the handout that he had, so we know what we're looking at as of when?
Nick, you want to come up? We probably will have some questions for you. Well, okay, so would you please come up? All right, so. All right, so, all right. Ahead of this meeting, actually, this has been on my mind for a while, the amount of exposure we have with YO Star two in specifically. So Nick has a, a Excel workbook where he's got our, our investments, CDs, the pools, everything like that. I asked for that, just so that I could, a picture's worth a thousand words sometimes. And I'm fairly decent, this was done, you know, it's very primitive, it's, it's not much. It's a 10-minute sit-down with the computer and throw a pivot table out, just so that you guys can see where we're at, our exposure level. The first page that we've got is, it's a basic pools, either WGIF, wild class, or YO Star.
And, and WGIF is what we just heard?
We just heard from them.
Great.
Wild class is Troy's group.
Peak.
Peak. And then YO Star is, is obviously a state. So the, you can see on the first page that we've got right at 90 million and a half in that, class 33.3, and with W, with them, WGIF, 4.7. If you look at the, the pie chart, which will kind of, should show you the exposure that we have out there, we have 72% of our, our money, investment pool money with YO Star.
And Commissioner Millen, my understanding. Commissioner Millen, my understanding is that $98 million in YO Star represents roughly 40% of the overall YO Star monies. Is that right?
YO Star two, yes.
YO Star two monies.
Yes. If you go ahead and broke it down a little bit more, we'll come back to things if you got questions. Nick should be able to answer them a lot better than me, but I can give it a good try too. We broke, I broke, it's broken down into the actual different funds. So YO Star two is just a lump, lump fund. Wild class has our hospital, has some hospital funds, has our emergency cash reserve, and our general fund investment. Now, you're talking about having some funds as liquidity so that we can get to them immediately. Part of our auditing process and recommendations, and correct me if, it's what, seven months? Operating or?
Reserve.
Yeah, yeah. What's that? Or three months?
I think it's.
But anyways, the, so the emergency cash reserve.
Cash reserve.
Okay. Is set, is set at 7.5. So we can pull all those funds at 7.5 immediately and survive on it. There's not a 14-day wait or anything like that. We can get, we have access to those funds immediately. So that's where, we're not just sitting on them in a bank or in a mason jar in the backyard. They are sitting out there.
I don't want to do that either, Jim.
No, no, but you know what I mean. But it is sitting out there. We have immediate access to it, and it's still gaining, it's still got a yield rate of what? And it's still gaining, it's still got a yield rate of what, 4-point something?
It doesn't have all these short-term CDs that are less than five years.
Right.
I think there's, what, 2.1 million in RBC, 3.2 million in another more RBC.
So we've got that liquidity. And we need to maintain it. I agree with you 100%. But we need to be thinking about how we do maintain it and still get a rate on it.
So let me say something to you that I have questions about. I don't know how much money this county needs to have in reserve to fix a lot of our worn-out buildings and equipment. And I mentioned a while back, and I think Steve was there, we did talk to the city manager about it. They commissioned a company that went out and reviewed all of their buildings and all of their equipment and came back with a report that says, here's what you may need to fix these things. I thought that was a superb idea. I wish we would act on that and have that done, because it's given us all the roadmap that what we have to be concerned about. Because I can tell you, Jim, when I went up to the jail, that concerns me with the amount of money that that thing could cost us just with one item going out.
All right. No, I understand your concern. If you'll turn the other page, the last page there, you'll see where it's all broken down. So you can visually see it.
And thank you for doing this.
Oh, no problems. WildStar I, we have so, it's so minimal, what, 73,000 in it, 73.5, that it comes up as a 0%. We should at least have some into it if we're going to use it. And break that out a little bit more between WildStar I, II, Wild Class, as overall general, WGIF as a general. We only have 3% of theirs, you know, using their. So having 70% of our funds within WildStar II is very concerning to me, especially when we're the majority stock holder in that freaking fund. Now, the problem is, and like I said, keep in mind what he said, where the banks had a run. It destroyed the bank. It destroyed those funds. With us being at 40%, if we tried to withdraw all that fund, all at once, our money from that fund, it will destroy it. It'll hurt us, it'll hurt the other counties, it'll hurt the state. We need to be mindful of how we approach this.
Right.
If we decide to pull any of the monies out of that WildStar II and invest them somewhere else.
Jim, the thing that I liked what they said was, is that you can give a certain amount of money to us and let us invest that. That way, we get a good test run. Because I don't, you know, I don't know anything about.
Turn your mic around.
Pardon me? I don't know anything about this company. And I don't know what other people like the University of Wyoming and everybody would say about them, Converse County, haven't had a chance to look into that. Maybe you have. But I always like to, and I've done this with banks before, tell me what would have happened if we had put this money with your bank the same time we did with this other bank. They don't like doing that. But they will do that. And then that'll give you an idea of how much more money or less money we would have made. And it's certainly evidence for our taxpayers, who are going to criticize every level of this if we don't give it the biggest due diligence we've ever given anything.
The biggest criticism that we can get potentially, as far as I see, is if we do nothing.
Well, no. And I agree with you there about doing nothing. I would like to see a couple things. I would really like to have a good idea of how much trouble we're in in terms of worn-out equipment and worn-out buildings. Then I want to know, there's people that want money for a library. Do we want to set aside money for a library? How much are we going to have to put in the new county building for the health department? Do we, is there any other buildings we may have to be looking at in the next five years? What, I know that the equipment is a problem. We've worn out equipment, keeping all these roads open. And do we need to buy new equipment? And how much money is that going to cost us? So I don't have those numbers in my head. I'd really like to have somebody tell me, here's what we think when we go look at the jail. I'm really concerned about the jail, Jim. And the courthouse over here, because these guys are telling me they don't think the security's enough. The security here isn't enough. And so I know those cost money. I'm not saying we have to do it. I'm just saying, what is the likelihood of it? And what is the likely cost? So we would all be more informed, sitting here saying, okay, yeah, we should set aside 20 million for all these things. I don't know if that's the number.
No, I agree with you on that. But the thing that also concerns me about spending our principal, rather than trying to use mainly our interest, is if we have a year similar to this, only worse, where the state decides not to give back the local government monies. It was very close, five votes.
Right.
If we don't get that money, then at that point, we're going to have to dig into what we have. We're going to have to be self-sufficient. By investing our principles and managing our money properly, hopefully, if something, God forbid, happens like that where the state decides to keep the local tax and not give it back to the local governments, then we'll be able to survive until that legislative body changes.
And I agree with you on almost everything you said. And what I would like to say, the state's going to figure out a way to get our 100 million dollars. They're going to figure that out. They're not going to come down here and rob it. But they're going to not give us the tax money. Because they're saying, you guys have 100 million dollars. And we're not about to assess the state of Wyoming with a personal income tax. That's exactly what's happening right now, why these people are getting such high tax notices. And you know what our people think about high taxes. And we're sitting here on this money. We have to defend this money at all costs somehow and use it for our people. And if the state, because it's going to be a worse winter than we had last time. It's going to be a worse economy than is going on right now. Then it's going to be a great economy. I've lived through about five booms and busts, just like you guys have, maybe a couple more than you guys have. So I'm a little more cognizant sometimes of where you put money. And then if you don't really know what all your bills are going to be and what stuff you have to fix here, because I see things that I think have been let go by, in the past.
So going, sorry, Peter. Going back, though, circling back, pulling the reins a little bit, getting back on task of what we're looking at specifically. What I gave to you guys, again, came from Nick's numbers, from the investment pools that we got. Any questions on any of the pivot tables or anything like that? Or any questions for Nick?
So I do. So how do you guys feel about investing your money?
Get closer to your mic.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Millen, what is your opinion of this?
The purpose.
Do you feel like you can give an opinion?
Yes.
As to whether we invest all the money with these people, or a portion of it, or how much? Do you feel like you can give that opinion?
I would recommend, well, we showed how much is in WildStar. Take money out of there and put it like in Wild Class or WGIF and, let's see if the investment pool is in.
Well, we're all in two and not one. We could put some.
I assume one was set up for the purpose, procedure to pull money out of WildStar I. And WildStar II was doing really good, then they decided to put it on WildStar II.
My question is, is what's your opinion of buying something from these people that gave this presentation in the manner in which they laid it out?
They're not, they didn't lay it?
I don't really know. We really need, well, we might need a little financial advice, but the brokers we have now, I think, are suitable forgiveness financial advice. And the fee, there's hardly any fee at all. I mean, it's based upon transactions. Or they take a little bit out of the yield. There's a gross yield, and they take a little bit out of the yield, and they get the net yield.
See, I don't even know where this company's out of, Jim. They never said. Does any of these people even live in Wyoming that are coming to present? I just don't know them. And so I'm having difficulty saying I want to do business with you when I don't know somebody. So that's why I'm asking for opinions.
I don't think they're a national company.
Yeah, Commissioner Laird, a couple things. First of all, their, some of their slides give their background, their other Wyoming clients. And so you might take a look at that. With respect to facilities, that's not really why I think we're here today. I think that, number one, the library has a facilities assessment that's 10 years old, so we have a pretty good sense of that. We know what the health department needs, so we have a pretty good sense of that. And we have Tom Popolik, who can, and who's, part of his job is to specifically tell us where we stand and what we need, both short and long term, for the facilities. That's part of the budget process, and we can get into that with him when he comes before us on the 5th. We could also ask Mr. Popolik for kind of a specific list of priority items and non-priority items, wish lists, for example, could be included in that for the detention center. That's what I think you and Commissioner North are also more in tune with as the liaisons for the Hall of Justice and the detention center. So maybe you have some specifics in conjunction with Mr. Popolik. But I think what we're really facing is a problem. I think it's a problem that we are roughly 40% of WildStar II. That is not diversified in any way. And I think, while I personally don't feel we need to take everything out of that, I think we need to take some money out of that and put it into one or more of these two other companies we've heard from recently. I'm comfortable, frankly, with both of them. That's the Wild Class, that's Mr. Troy Hunsaker with Peak Investments. And I'm comfortable with PF, PFAM, the presenter today. And so what I'm not advocating for is to lock these funds up in any way, but to put them in perhaps similar or partially similar investments, so that we can still access them on short notice, maybe not immediately, but on short notice, some of these funds for large capital construction projects, which I think is still a ways down the road before we can say, well, we need 20 million for this or 10 million for that. We need to figure that out. I agree with you, Mr. Laird, but I don't think that that's really the discussion today. I think the discussion is our portfolio risk by being such a big part of WildStar II.
So, well, once again, I agree with most of what you say, Mr. Nicolason. I look at this a little differently. I like to know what things are going to cost me before I shuffle my money around and not after I find out. So I've been talking about this issue for a couple months. And I agree that Mr. Popolik probably has the most understanding of this of anybody in the county. I think if you heard the reasoning behind why the city did it the way they did it, it might make more sense. And I think you could probably get that. But I do agree that I don't like, I don't like all the eggs in one particular basket. But I also like to know a little more about the basket I'm putting it in. And so.
The, so the, this dog that I've been chasing, that I'm so concerned about here lately, is just what Peter said. That goes back to your discussion with insurance, is exposure risk and how far extended we are on certain pools, correct? That's my main concern, is what we're doing there. What we do with the money, or where we take, once we get everything organized, if we take a little bit of money here or there, whatever, that's a discussion further down the road. What we need to focus on right now is correcting this, as I see it, a problem, potentially a substantial problem, where the county could really be hanging out on a limb here, which we are. Correct this problem. And then at that point, we can focus at a later date, using those funds, using funds to do whatever. But right now, we need to fix this before we have a problem.
I agree with you. Now, let me ask you this question, Mr. Commissioner. Do you have a figure in mind that you would feel comfortable investing outside of what we have, the way we have it now?
Not right now. Again, so, in my mind, I wouldn't put more than 10% of whatever, you know, behold more than 10% of any of the pools. So that, you know, we're looking at potentially joining, moving some funds around to WildStar I. That would increase that percent, drop the percents elsewhere. Depending on the pool, the amount of money, liquidity and everything that is available both in Star and the Wyoming WG, whatever it is, Wild Class and WGIF, then we can take a look at those, as long as we're not over 10% of that, to maybe 12%. We'd be good at that point.
You're talking 10 million?
I don't know. I'd have to do the math.
Is that what 10% is approximately? I'm not going to hold you to any number.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm using percentages here. But of that. But us held in 40% of I, that's bad, that all of our monies in, what, 73% of our money is in one fund? That's a bad thing. We need to diversify in case something happens somewhere else. But, you know, it's just, we need to focus on that. Not on what we're going to do with the money later, but moving things around. And as far as different companies to fund with, as the county, we are very limited with who we can participate with.
Right, right.
Okay? So, other than CDs, we need, there's certain funds that we can put our money in, and that's it. It's not, it's, yeah, it's a very limited amount of people that we can put our money in.
You're making total sense to me. I just, I got to ask this one question, you know, because I'm a lawyer.
And we already have money with them.
You were on the commission to put this money where it is now. So.
Why? Because of the rates. But then lost focus on it, and this is the correction.
So, I've agreed with about 99% of what you say. I really would like to have these people give me a comparison. If they had $10 million of our money back two years ago, what would have netted us?
And if the rates had stayed higher like they were when we put the money into that fund.
If they're going to get all of this millions of dollars, they're going to be happy to do that.
Mr. Millen?
Yes.
Wild Class has given us a comparison, if we would have invested with them instead of WildStar. That's pretty impressive.
Okay, well.
Yeah. And I think they provided.
They provide, yeah, that was an email Troy sent us here a while back.
And I can get ahold of it and also.
Well, good, yeah. I'd like to see that.
Wild Class, they did it for us.
So I get back to your opinion. What's your opinion of putting money with this company?
We got money with them.
I agree with Commissioner Millen that we should diversify and have some of WGIF, Wild Class, some in WildStar. I mean, right now, Wild Class is 4.87. WGIF, April, is 4.74. While WildStar II is 2.3.
Do you know anything about this company that was here today?
I don't know a whole lot about it.
So, in fairness, because again, we're running behind, in fairness, to ask you these questions right now, I would rather you research it and look into who the best companies are to go with as far as what the return is, and who are the good companies that we should be looking at that would do the county's money right?
We have good companies running out, WGIF, W-YO Class, and.
But is that something you could put together for us and bring back to the commission so that we can make an informed decision across the board?
The one thing we don't want to do is what we did already.
No, yeah.
And chase that rate. We chased the rate. We put it all into Wild Class II. WildStar II, sorry, Troy. WildStar II. And now where we're at, we need to diversify companies, not chase the rate quite as much.
Sure. But what I'm asking Nick is, Nick's our financial guy, so let's let him do an analysis of what the best move is to do with the county's money. Not five of us spitballing, trying to figure out what to do, or putting Nick on the spot right now to figure it out. If you could, go back for us and figure out what our best next step is with this money to secure it so that we make sure that we're doing right by the taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't have said that better myself. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't get an opinion from our treasurer, a solid opinion. That's what I'm seeking, and I'm glad the chairman asked you to do that. Thank you.
Nick, once you, when you prepare that, if you could, prepare it in a memo form to come back to the commission.
Nick, one thing. And I was just talking to Paul Bertollio. We got dinged pretty bad last year when we moved some of our funds. We just want to make sure that if the CDs, if we have something, that we make sure that it's. it's matured before we do it, instead of pulling out ahead of time. You know what I mean? If we have some of these funds, we want to make sure, if we're going to transfer, and I'm not saying what we're transferring or anything like that, I'm just saying we need to make sure that wherever it is, we need to make sure that we don't pull it out prior to maturity dates on.
We're not necessarily talking about anything maturity.
No, no, no. I'm just saying in the future, for looking at this. I'm not saying we're doing anything. I'm not transferring anything. I'm just saying that's something that we need to...
Well, you weren't here when they discussed that, Mr. North, and they did say if you take money out of something that isn't mature, that could be a down, they get a bigger cut, yeah. You may lose some principal. Because of what the money says.
All right. If you could do that for us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Nick. All right, we're a little bit behind, but David Holshizer is up next for Youth Crisis Center.
You're back, Gary.
Commissioner, Chairman, real, thank you for having us today. Want to introduce Lisa Chu. She's our finance coordinator behind us, and Gary Wakebrooke is the secretary of our board of directors for the YOCC. They joined us to help answer any questions that you can have in regards to financials or some of the history of YOCC. So just wanted to kind of dive in and go through a few things that we discussed a little bit prior, but wanted to go into a little bit more in depth about some of our programming and the ask for budget requests this year. And answering any questions that you can have?
It's on.
It is on, okay. All right, well, if everyone's prepared, we happen to get started. Again, our current operations at Youth Crisis Center are, we have not only, we have a crisis shelter which houses up to 10, but we can flex up to 12, depending upon the situation. So we have actually 12 bedrooms in that facility. We are basically getting paid half of our costs back from the state, 410 of the beds, and that did what constitutes one of the largest spending portions of our current Youth Crisis Center. Then, when we move over to our group home wing, that houses up to 500, that particular wing portion does have room for 10 kids, but because of the funding that we receive, that one is primarily funded fully between DFS contracting and our grant writing and fundraising efforts in order to provide the funding that we do that. So we do have 10 licensed beds in that wing that we can utilize, more to its full potential. And, you know, part of that discussion today is kind of where the state is going and where the governor's mental health summit is kind of directing some of this. So we want to just kind of talk about that just a little bit later on. We also have an unused clinical wing. Right now, we have seven unused licensed beds in there, and that can be expanded if we need to up to 10. So overall, our facility could actually have 30 licensed beds in a very short amount of time, due to state licensing, because that was originally how it was constructed. So just an overview, as you can see, we've got administrative offices, the crisis shelter, the group home, and the main resources is that clinical wing that I'm talking about will be unused beds. So current model for ad used programs, we've moved away from the juvenile justice model to the group home began back in the early eighties and kind of continued through the nineties and early 2000s into a clinical model, which fully integrates more into what we're trying to do with juvenile justice. We're seeing a lot of kids with mental health concerns, substance abuse issues overlapping that, parents along with many different type issues affecting them. So the biggest thing we do is use a strength-based practice in trauma-informed care to help interact with youth, and that really has yielded positive results and changes for organization. So the juvenile justice model of, you know, quasi punishments, strict rules, separation, things like that, is being made more into therapy, counseling, behavioral interventions, life skills, and really giving the kid back to a functioning kid so that they can eventually grow and function properly. So we wanted to put this out there. Last year, the Netroon County Commissioners were very generous to us and moved us from the $30,000 grant to, or allocation of $50,000 grant. At the minimum, that was one request that we would have this year, is helping us with that $50,000 at a baseline. But we do want to talk about some of the programming and opportunities for this unique organization that we're following. If you look at the totals, NCSO replacements total for this year will be in 2.5, total juvenile placements, community current placements from the county, which does not include the city of Casper, Towne Mills, County Edgewell, can drive around 59 to 60 kids. When you look at all of that information and put it together with their average length of stay, which is growing, parents are, and details are staying with us a lot longer, we're at about 9.5 days. The total cost of services for these kids from that county portion, not only the NCSO, but from people living within the county jurisdictions outside of those towns and cities, is about 182,000. So, you know, if we were to leverage our DFS contract, which is $114 per day, whatever leftover is money that we have to raise in order to have those kids, and that's why that $50,000 is so critical, because that truly is kind of that county portion that we're talking about. Now, we have broken this down and presented, they presented this information based upon the city of Casper numbers, we presented that to them, we presented in front of the Towne Mills, presented them what their cost could be, and also the Towne Mills. So we actually have those requests out, not only the city of Casper, but for the first time with the Towne Mills, for the first time with Towne Mills. And there's a very specific reason for that moving forward. So what I want to talk a little bit about is, for group home funding, we get a contract of 164.41 per day per youth, which is roughly $300,000, and it costs about $229 per day to have youth. So when you hear us talk about the funding request, it's a real tangible number that we look at and a concern for us, because that bottom number that you see there, the $170,000, that's money that we don't have, that we have to fundraise. We don't have any input from anyone putting money into our group home funding, so that is something that we have to fundraise, we have the right grants for, and that's extremely important. Because one of the things that I do want to point out is that if you look at our funding model for the Youth Crisis Center, 53% of our funding comes from state funding, meaning comes solely from DFS contracts. We have yet to be able to meet any type of requirements for, we meet the requirements, we have to enter into a contract or an ability to work with the Department of Health yet. We're trying to have those discussions to direct the grants to be done, trying to... So our fundraising efforts, which is the board, the staff, and our grants that we prepare, we earn about 38%. So, I mean, I feel that that's a really fair number and a very high bar that to hold at the Youth Crisis Center while we're also trying to operate, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. And then our local government funding is at only 9%. And that local government funding is the city of Casper and the county commissioner, these are numbers from last year, they haven't entered into our fiscal year yet. So when you look at the local funding, it's pretty low, it's at about 9%. And that's important because now, kind of move forward, currently, again, 9% of the funding comes from the local community. This is where we're having some struggles at the state level, is our state legislators are approaching us and telling us that they need to see more buy-in from our communities. They feel that these are more community programs in there, should be state funded. So when we've had discussions as a group in terms of youth services organizations, one of the things that, and a great example is the Health and Human Services Committee is telling us that they don't want to put any more money into crisis shelters, because they truly feel that that's more of a local matter and that the local representation should be more robust rather than state funding. But as you can see, we're fairly state-funded heavy in what we do. And that's one of the reasons why I set out this year to talk now with yourselves, I'm sure, is the city of Casper, but also for the first time reaching out to Towne Mills and County Edgewell, because they do have kids that stay in our facilities, and we have done those presentations, and have made that ask for financial support from their towns as well, to help out of the cost of the kids coming to the center. It's not that we're asking for all of it to be covered, we're just asking help from others that currently have best money that you can get from the state. And we're going to certainly do our part, because I think we've shown historically that we've done our part over, you know, with our fundraising and our grants. We've been very proactive in grant writing and very successful in being able to get grants. But we're starting to see that a lot more people are taking advantage of grant writing, and it's becoming a little bit more difficult to find that funding. So the state is placing a strong, strong emphasis on the mental health, substance abuse, and behavioral health. That was a topic of the last governor's mental health summit in form, is that they really want to be able to try and find ways with mental health. And the Department of Health is modeling when their task force, the legislative task force will reform in order to explore and improve services. Unfortunately, this is a truth that we're seeing across the state, I think across the nation, current trends in that view is increasingly including mental health and substance abuse. And it's to the point where, you know, one of the difficult things of the state over there, trying to tackle something that I don't think they ever can handle on, because I almost feel like, I think there's several of us that have been versed upon it, it's almost like an emergency response situation. What do you have? What are your resources? What's your capacity? I'm not sure the state has a full understanding of what the community capacity is to handle something as significant and what we're facing with, not only the challenges with the youth, but the challenges with the adult population as well. And I think you get probably hear that quite often in some of your meetings and things like that. So I wanted to go back and talk about why it's important for us with the unused wing. We are not asking for any funding on this. This is us seeking funding in the future to open our unused wing for a pathway home program, which will allow for kids coming back from inpatient treatment, an opportunity to slowly reintegrate back into the home, rather than an immediate drop in the home from which they came, which they struggled from in the first place. This was a program that CIC came to us and said, hey, we have a huge need, you guys have a facility in the department. So we want to create this partnership. So we are in the early stages of trying to find funding for this, and one of the areas is in trying to work with the Wyoming Department of Health and say, we have the room, we have the infrastructure, we just really need the funding to help us pay for case managers, youth workers, the clinical staff, because we have the hard assets, we have the active building and the infrastructure to do it. So it's almost, it's a really pretty good program to get out. But I just want to throw that out there, because I want you to know, in Netroon County, we do have opportunities to expand our services, and we do, so if you hear that you don't know that we can, we can. We can expand our services, we just need the funding hopefully still. And again, this is not an ask today, this is to make you guys aware of what potentials are out there, given the discussions at the state level with the, you know, with the mental health, the substance abuse, and behavioral concerns. This, I do want to, you know, this would be a very, this is one of the most sobering things that I've seen, this is the second year that I've seen this as the executive director with the Crisis Center. This was completed on one day at a time, in November 2nd of 2022, we had one prior in 2021. But this is all the YO agencies, the Young Youth Services Association, and it talks about all the kids in Congress that cared at that time. 61% diagnosed with depressive disorder. 37% have been diagnosed with conduct or oppositional compliance disorder. 55% have one or failed placements, and that's usually a foster placement or some type of replacement in another facility. 72, or sorry, 39% had attempted suicide or planned to commit suicide. And again, even though we did see reduction, which recently in some of our suicides, we are still among the human states in the nation with non-suicides. And that is, if you deal with it, almost on a daily basis with kids that are having struggles, all right? 70% suffered some form of abuse. I think some of us in this room were prior long-term ill with that. Maybe that's even a little bit wrong. 43% have suffered some sort of sexual abuse. 47.5% had experienced personal substance abuse. And we are seeing that trend at a younger age. We're talking 12 and 13, and we're now starting to see that. In fact, we're starting to be so concerned about that, that we will be doing RAN training with our employees and bringing RAN into our center in case we have a kid come in that is on a heavy overdose. We're going to have RAN in our center. Is that important? 68% came from family with substance abuse problems. 44% have gone while passing through jail for this. And this one blew my mind, and so it's always increased from 0.1. 74% have been contracted some sort of psychiatric medication. So this is what is presenting in Wyoming today, in Wyoming now. This isn't a national study. This is directed from the numbers across Wyoming, including the Netroon County community, which is a large representation of this, because we're one of the largest entities in the state, us, the S House, and Keton, Kepa, or ours, and in the four corners of the state. So as we move forward, the ask that we had for the crisis wing, these are separated into different budgets that we work with. The crisis wing is by far our largest budget to deal with, and we'll need a lot of help with it. So this ask is specifically help us house kids from the Netroon County community and CSO. But as we move forward, I did want to put forward, we're probably going to jump around, a supplemental need for the Crisis Center is, and this was talked about in February, was the court placements. We're starting to see, we do see a lot of court placements. At any one point in time, we can have three, four, five, six court placements in our facility. Because of our funding, we are not able to place those kids into a group home. They have to go into our crisis shelter, which removes X amount of kids that we can actually put into crisis as need be. So if we have six there, four placed there, when the court says, hey, UICC, we'll take this kid, we say, okay, we're not going to argue, we'll take the kid out, because we feel we're the best place for him, because we can offer him a little bit more than I think a KDC can, because we try to facilitate school and things like that, getting into That would only need placement for four kids in emergency situations or long-term. So what we're running into is how do you do this? So we went back and we relooked at our numbers, and without having to put another case manager on and utilizing the one that we have in an extra capacity, a bare minimum, if we were to expand five additional beds in group home, we'd be looking at about 193,000. And that would allow us to pay for the youth care workers that we need, but we would guarantee to either the boards or the county that those beds would only be for court order kids. Again, this is a supplemental ask, if you go through your budget and you think that there's an opportunity to help support us more, or you find value in what you do, you might keep this one in the back of your mind as well. I have reached out to the seven judicial circuit, that we just, I've reached out to the seven judicial courts, district courts, and sent them a request, a budgetary request at our original number of about 140,000 to help us cover the cost of those court order placements added now. I have yet to hear anything back. So I don't know where the courts lie. I know that, I know that the court of district court is the county, but the judges are part of the state program, so I don't know how those are interacting and how the budgetary process goes. So I have to kind of try to dig her tips on that part. But what I want to emphasize is that we are trying to do everything that we can to do more for these kids and do more in terms of mental health and substance abuse. And we did recently put forward with the city of Casper, I don't know, we did work with them to fill out their one same grant. There was some confusion on the application within our, in our actual application where it says a budget request form, we put 400,000, we put $100,000 per year for four years. So our ultimate ask was for 400,000 because of, 100,000 per year because of the number of kids that were seen coming from the city of Casper. That ultimately, they will ultimately, the fund is roughly 70,000 per year. But at some point, we'd love to readjust that at the city and provide them all the numbers again to show that we're seeing a lot of kids from the city there. Again, as we move forward, I think if we don't take a realistic approach and a community-wide involvement, because I don't know if the state's going to be supportive of providing us with more money. That has been their answer the last two, two and a half, three years that we've been asking for increases from... asking for increases for crisis shelter, because we have not seen an increase since 2012 for the crisis shelter. It stayed at a hundred and fourteen dollars a day and it costs us two hundred twenty-nine dollars a day for the kiddos in our facility. And the majority of that burden falls upon us to raise through fundraising and grant that, which we've stepped up and really done that, so. I do, and I want to credit all of my staff and I want to credit the board with ensuring that we look for as much as we can in those areas, pushing, giving, finding more funding. I will say that our nonprofit is doing very well, we've been black for quite a while, but we continue to struggle with wages and losing employees and those things have to be addressed. So that's why we're looking to try to add a little bit of funding to help continue to hire great people, train great people, keep great people home. I did bring Gary along a little bit to talk a little bit, and I'd love for him to share kind of the roots of Y C C and how it kind of began a little bit back in the heats. You know, and thank you, woman buddy.
The, I think Dave left out one thing, one commitment that the crisis center's made over the last couple of years is that we've added a family counselor. And that's a big step for us. We've tried to have one for several years, we've got one. That's about eighty grand a year. Some of that we can bill for, but we see a lot of criticism, as you can imagine, with the youth that come through. We see that, see them again and again, the family dynamics don't change. Well, we've got a pretty good counselor on the payroll at the crisis center. And the board steps up with eighty grand a year and of course, we haven't had any, it drew as far as getting any of that money back from insurance or social security, but that's one area Dave that is very important in recent deals. As far as, I've been on board of crisis center for thirty-three years, almost a lifer on the, on the crisis center board. It started in eighty-three, the Episcopal Church and Cathedral Home and several other organizations around the state that we need crisis shelters for these kids that shouldn't go to jail, runaways, people that are, have minor offenses. And, so they started this at eight shelters around the state and state funded it. Clearback May 4, we were over on Jefferson Street, Dick Frisane started it. And that program has been a pretty good program, but over the years, well, we saw three hundred and sixty from the P D last year. And, you know, those kids would have gone to jail. When the P D gets them, they go to jail, they go to the hospital, they go home, or they come to the crisis center. That's four choices that you have. And that, that's been a wonderful program and when they're there, they're usually there for several days and they get a lot of help and now they get counseling help. The crisis center also, over time, has morphed into an area where we take the kids, we have a longer term deal for the kids that can't make it in a, in a placement environment with a family. They can't make it, so they go, they live in that other wing, and they go to school and they matriculate when they're eighteen. And we follow some of them along and there's some real success stories there, but those are the two things over the years that the crisis center has dealt with. And suddenly, the last couple of years, we've been, we've been getting people that are sentenced by a judge to the crisis center. And that's the deal, that, well, we don't have, that's not our facility. We have, we have a crisis shelter for kids that the, that the police are bringing us and we have a group home for the kids that can't make it in the.
Family setting. And we don't have a place for people that are sentenced to ninety days at the crisis center instead of being sentenced to jail. Now, we take them, we take all the kids, but we're taking beds away from the, we're taking beds away from the crisis shelter. And so, part of the reason that we're here is that the county commission usually funds kids that go to J D C, they usually fund the kids that the judges put someplace. Well, judges are putting them with us and we don't, we don't really have, we're doing it and the crisis center is fine, but we, our ask is that we think it's a good program. We give those kids a lot of things that jail doesn't offer. We can't take violent kids and we can't take kids that have difficulties we can't deal with, but we can take a lot of those kids and they go to school and they have a community setting to live in and they have good chow and a safe, safe environment for the time that they're there. And we just asked it, how, we get that other half of our wing instead of putting them in with this place where they're supposed to be, for kids that, whose parents got killed in a car wreck, or kids that were runaways, or kids that got beat within a pulp that we're keeping over on the crisis side. We need those beds, we need those ten beds for the crisis shelter. Well, we're taking, we're taking the kids and we'll make room for them, but our ask is, I think Dave is, our ask is that the courts need to somehow fund what they're sentencing. And I love the crisis center, it's near and dear to my heart, or I would not have been there for thirty-three years, I guarantee you, it's pretty hard work. But it's a place where we found great help at a time our family needed it. And we've seen from four to seven hundred kids a year since the nineteen eighties. And if you go around this town and you ask your employees, they've been in the crisis center, their kids have been in the crisis center, your kids have been in the crisis center. It's a, it's a wonderful program, but if, if we're going to go down this road of, of taking kids that they aren't sending to jail, I think that we need to look at some alternate funding and that's, that's the only reason I'm here is, I mean, I'm the guy that keeps re-upping when you're supposed to kind of get off, but, but, I know where the bodies are buried, so they keep me around, but, but anyway, that's our ask and we've got a really good director and a really good organization here. And we've done what the county did, we have gone through and we have reevaluated our market value of our employees and we've gotten our employees to where we don't have the turnover and we've got the kid, we've got the people that are, that are actually caring for those kids. And not everybody speaks teenage, I'll guarantee you, it takes a special person to work in those wings. And, but we, we've done those things and we've got a, we've got a rocking place over there with a good cook and a safe environment and this, that's our ask and thank you.
Thank you.
And our, our promise is to continue whether, no matter what happens, is to continue to serve the kids, we'll find a way. We will find a way.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Nicholas.
David, thanks for that commitment to our community. And Gary, thanks for your commitment over all these years, these decades, for your commitment. It's, it's been great, it's a great organization and I just can't see a way that this commission can't support that fifty thousand dollars. I had a question on a hundred and nineteen thousand for five more beds for the group home wing. My, my question is, is that ask a hundred percent from the county or are you trying to get from other governmental agencies and the city Casper, for example, some of that hundred and nineteen from, from them?
Yeah, that, the request went out to the Natrona County Commission and then also the seventh judicial district courts. The reason that it would be hard to justify doing that through the city is because city courts don't send any kiddo to Y C C, they don't court order kids. The majority of those court orders come from district court, there are some that come from circuit court out of drug court, but the majority of them come from district court. And we don't want to step on any judge's toes at all, we, we know that we're probably a pretty important place for those kids to be. Again, our programming allows for them to go to school, life skills, things like that that we continue to work with them, but this would be guaranteed beds for them.
And this is an annual request, so when do you think you'll hear from the courts on whether they'll contribute to this?
I don't know, we put the request out recently in hopes that why they're going, it's kind of the same budget process to see, I'm not sure, sometimes, I'll be honest with you, I, I don't know if we'll hear or if we won't hear.
That's been a dry, that's been a dry hole, Ms. Nicholas, for many, many years as far as our needs versus what the judges have been able to do, that I don't think that they have a provision.
Well, maybe, maybe we can talk offline and, and at least be able to understand who you're talking to and maybe be able to reach out to the extent I can and, and help lobby for you. Are you getting significant funds from other nonprofits and the Collective Health Trust is the one I was thinking of? It seems to me this would be right up their alley and so are you getting annual support from them and if so, how much?
Yeah, we do get annual support from the Natrona Collective Health Trust and that's a hundred thousand dollars a year. But our budget is right around one point three, one point four million, so again, that's a small percentage of it and that's through grant writing that we have to do in order to get that. So again, that's all part of that thirty-eight percent that we've committed to doing in terms of fundraising, you know, that, that's, that is part of that.
I would hope that, because I, I think there's some ability there and I, I know we, we heard from the collective recently, so I know there's both an ability and a willingness for programs such as yours, youth mental health is their mission right now.
Yeah.
And, and that's dovetails really well with about everything you're doing.
Yeah.
So, maybe there's an opportunity in the future to grow that a hundred thousand dollar annual a little bit.
They cap that though, so that is the most that you can get as an organization. So we reach the cap on that amount that they give out for operational costs.
Maybe those are conversations we can have too with them.
Yeah, it, yeah, because it, part of it was, you know, part of it came from the sale of that hospital, I think, is part of where that trust was set up, so.
Right.
I truly do, but, you know, one thing that I would say, and I can't advocate this anymore, is that how do, how would you suggest that we answer the state legislators when they're asking for more community input? I mean, I think that's a question that we're having a struggle statewide in all of our organizations to be able to answer when legislators are directing us to see that and ask for more funding from our local governments because they are the ones where our kiddos are coming from, this is the area. And that's, that, you know, I'm just being completely honest and looking to shed some light on that because legislators are going to have their own opinion where they want the money to go.
Have you asked anybody to come in tour, any of the local?
Yeah, actually we did, we got a, a pretty significant bunch that came from the Freedom Caucus, I was surprised that they came in, but they were very gracious, came in, toured, I think there was six of them. They were very open to what we do, they asked a lot of questions, we spent about an hour and a half, I've reached out to several of the other local legislators and have yet had anyone take me up on the offer. We do have an annual luncheon that we hold down in Cheyenne for all the legislators and that has been poorly attended the last several years, so.
David, do you have a breakdown of, I mean, what the court ordered?
We're still putting all that stuff together, but what we did was we gave the average of what we're looking at with between three to five kids at any one time.
No, I was going to ask, do you have a breakdown of where they're actually coming from, if they're coming, the majority of those kids are coming from Casper, Mills, Evanville, the county?
We haven't added that in the breakdown just because we're trying to keep them differentiated by the courts, you know, that, we've just been looking at the courts that have been sending them to us.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
On the, excuse me, just one second. With the, and this is your board, I think now.
Well, it was.
Or is, or yours or somebody's.
It is mine.
You know, we, in the past, we've discussed quite a bit about the cost of housing the kiddos with, with the court through you guys versus sending them to the jail at the juvenile detention center up there. For the life of me, I can't remember the approximate number that it costs us for, to house those kids up there versus you. Do you?
I don't, but what I can tell you is that when we look at what we came up with as a bare minimum for the supplemental need, again, this is not the main ask, this is if you guys have additional funding, you were curious about maybe looking at program. This would end up being about sixty-five to seventy-five dollars a day is what it would cost to have those additional five beds. And I don't know what it costs up at J D C, I don't know what the contract is.
And with you guys being a separate entity and whatnot, so, you might talk to Gus as well and find out how he's charging and billing the county, the city, whatever, the rates and whatnot, and how he's going through it with contracts and getting reimbursed for those kids for being up there.
Yeah, because I know that, I think that they're one hundred percent funded by the county, if I, if I'm correct on that.
Right, but don't we charge the city for housing, or is that, that out of county kids? That's Juves too, maybe kids from outside the county get up there.
Yeah, I think because they're regional juvenile detention, they'll get kids from places kind of all over. I know that when I was there, we used to get kids from like Bickmore County and things like that.
So we might check with that, and that's kind of what I'm saying is, is find out how he's.
Yeah.
Doing that and maybe that's.
Would that be an option for us, is looking at a contract rate with the county or is that not?
As a separate thing, you know, you guys need to be reimbursed somehow. And, and so, you know, maybe that's the option is, is to deal with the court.
And we were just trying to find a way that would ensure us to be able to ramp up operations because it takes three to four weeks to hire, well, it takes about, about a month to hire someone and about three to four weeks to train them so that they're ramped up. It's not where we can send someone home, we got to have people there because our ratio has to be there or else we get dinged by state licensing.
Right.
You know, so what we put together was what we felt was the most cost effective way to do it. If you went with a per day rate, you may end up paying even more, what, and what we decided to put out there was what it would cost us to do the, to actually do the program and not have to do a daily rate for anyone.
Just, pardon me.
I, I don't think that you're going to hear from the judges. I'd be surprised if you did, I, I think it could be an ethical concern with respect to money and them sentencing people somewhere. I don't think it's there, it may not, I'm just saying, this is kind of what I've been told through the grapevine, that it's something that they don't have the power to deal with because they're, they work for the state and, and any money would come through the state, so guess who that is, that's your legislators. But I think that, you know, they're putting Natrona County children, our Natrona County courts are putting Natrona County children in your facility. And so, I found on this commission that a lot of people ask us for money and sometimes we, we give it to them and sometimes we don't. I'm, I'm particularly concerned that these are children. I'm concerned about you not getting paid for the ones that are going, they're sentenced by the court, because that should be a definite liability to, to some governmental agency. I don't know whether it's the commissioners or not at this point. The other side of that is the fact that you have a wing up there that's not usable, that you need, what is it, a hundred and eighteen thousand a year?
Uh, no, for the pathway home program, we'd be looking at between two hundred and twenty-five and two hundred and fifty thousand a year. And that's solely for the additional staff to monitor and to be there twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And we would, we would work with C W C C in order to utilize their clinicians, their physicians to help with that program. It's kind of a newer program that we really want to move into to help the mental health and substance abuse that is becoming such a big topic. And I'll be honest with you, it's this gentleman sitting right next to me that challenged me in my interview process, he said, you know, we have an unused wing, how can we use it? It's like one of those resources that we have that we're not using and I, and when you look at it from a state perspective, they're asking, you know, well, how do we reimagine mental health care in juveniles and adults? Well, what do you have in your community? Because it's the community providers that are doing probably ninety percent of the work.
Well, I think that, you know, I, there is any question, I don't think, on anybody's mind here that it isn't a needed facility and that you're doing a good job and all of that. And, you know, I did think it was weird when you gave me the tour and we came around to that wing and it's just kind of, there was no action there. And there needs to be action there and there needs to be some way of facilitating money. And I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if, you know, they do have a fentanyl issue there. know, Mr. Chairman, if, you know, they do have a fentanyl issue there. And would that qualify them possibly for some of that settlement money?
I was just talking to Commissioner Nick Nicholson about it's something we'd have to look into, see whether it would fit or not. But that's a potential.
That would be really good if they can get you fit into that. I know that we're getting a settlement there and that I think there's rules on that money. But the rules are you use it for people that have been disturbed by fentanyl. And I was looking at your notes that the number of children that were there that had problems, but then the family percentage was almost double. So, you know, the kid is having problems because the parent is having problems and with fentanyl and everything else. So you're, I guess I, I didn't know how committed you were, Gary, but I'm glad they have you. And I'm glad you guys came here today.
Got to get bored. Make sure you.
And we are committed, no matter what happens. We're committed to being part of this community. We've been open since 1982. We were an actual nonprofit in 1984. So we're almost at our.
You're, you're doing a good job.
I tell you that as far as that unused wing, you know, a little history, we had a crisis center. Then we started a, a Henry home. Ms. Henry gave us her house.
I remember that.
Over on Beach and.
I lived across the street from Ms. Henry.
Oh, yeah. Well, she, that became a thriving organization with 10 girls living there and a waiting list. And so we started a boys' home down at our Al Mills home in North Casper. And that became a thriving boys' home with 10, 10 people in it and a waiting list. And all those kids were put there by the judges because they couldn't make it in the, in family settings someplace. And those kids would go to high school and they'd get out. So then we consolidated that into our current, built a new crisis center on McKinley. And then we consolidated later into the one home that you were up at on 12th Street. A wing for girls, a wing for boys, and a crisis shelter. 32 beds. Well, over time, the judges, and I think times have changed, the judges send more people to jail and send more people home. And so we no longer had the, the 10. So we've made that co-ed. We've made that, that, those wings co-ed. We still offer all those valuable services, but that left us with a wing. There is no juvenile setting up at the Central Wyoming Counseling Center. That's closed. There is no place in this county for kids that have those kind of problems. There are no place for kids that return from out of state mental health facilities because there are none in state and try to reintegrate into the family. It's not there. It's a crime, those are crime needs. We've got the needs. All we have to do is get, we're in negotiations, or I would say talks with the counseling center to implement this program. We've got our own therapist on staff right now. And I, I think we're moving. I think something's going to happen.
Well, to me, Gary, there isn't anything more important in the county to me than the children.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I did want to clarify one quick thing with our contract with the state on our group home. Back about four years ago, they went to a, a contract basis rather than a per day, per kid basis, which ultimately the state DFS and WISA, which is the Wyoming Youth Services Association, hammered out what they believed to be the best agreement so that crisis, our group homes knew what they were getting in terms of an allotment rather than it fluctuating throughout the year. And they, they boxed kind of everyone into a contract. So the reason that we are held at five is because that's really what the contract with the state will allow us to pay for. And even at the, that amount that they've boxed us in at, we have to fundraise in order to make the rest of that money. So we realistically only have four group home beds, but we've committed to five with the state. But that hurts us in the long term because then when the state does their studies and they say, well, how many kids do you have in your group home? We can't ever go above five because the funding doesn't allow for it. Because we just can't, we don't have. So is that kind of making sense that like when they ask us, well, how, you know, give us a history of how many kids you have in your group home? Well, four years ago, you kind of boxed us in and entered into an agreement to where you only give us allotment. I mean, we could have more kids in our group home based upon the funding, but again, that, that.
We're licensed for 20.
Yeah. So, thank you so much. Though, I mean, if you have any other questions, we'd love to answer them. Thank you. Thank you for supporting us. And I do want to say Natrona County has supported us for a long, long time.
Mighty.
And your efforts have, not only in helping us financially, but actually, you know, attending meetings and being an advocate for us and the advocate for the kids. You guys have been amazing and outstanding over the years. So thank you for that and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you.
Sure.
Does Gary make enough time for your meetings?
Actually, he does. He even knows how to call in when we put it online.
He's kind of a slave driver.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Is what? Oh, okay. So where would you like to start? Make it at the top? Roads? So you just want to go over the memo on the purchases then? So yeah, I sent that memo April 24th. I hope you've all probably read it. So the prices have changed a little bit since I wrote this, but especially on the dozer that I've been renting because we've made another payment. So instead of having 43,000 and some change in that, we got about 58,000 in there now. So my question was, you know, do we want to purchase that machine or, or turn it back? I'm still using it up at Willow Creek to reclaim that road that washed out. But it would go back here in another 30 days if we don't exercise that. And then once we turn it back, I can't exercise that. So, and then the other two items, we destroyed two V plows this winter. And so I really do need to order two V plows, probably a sole source purchase. They, they can come from two sources, but they're the same plow, hinky plows. And those are about 36,000 for two of them. They've got to be built. One, one company builds them in Denver, I believe. And so it'd probably be late fall, early winter before we get them. And then I had budgeted 75,000 for a drop deck trailer. I'd received prices, quotes, 136.5 locally here. And then the 84,000 was out of state. Those prices have probably changed a little bit more, but still the out of state one was coming, coming out of Tennessee was still cheaper than what I can do here. And that includes delivery. So I would ask, you know, permission to go ahead and order that. It's going to take a little bit more money than what I had in the budget this year. A good chance we could get it invoiced though. And so that's the nutshell of the memo for equipment purchase. Just need some direction.
We needed, we needed another dozer anyway, correct? You had, you were slated to.
Well, I.
Trade in, you were slated to trade in one of them.
Yeah.
And we, and that one's non-functional now.
Yeah, we've ordered parts for it, but they haven't come in.
So basically what you're looking at is from what the new price is to what this one would be with the, with the additional amount that we paid on it.
Yeah, it'd be through about 330.
About 200,000 cheaper than what we'd buy a new one for at this point in time. I mean, plus or minus a little bit.
Yeah. Well, a brand new one, I skipped over that, but a brand new one would be 541,000.
That's what I'm saying. So we're, we're saving well over 200,000 if we chose to go ahead and get this one and just extend it. Now, next question is, if we didn't want to spend this full amount all at once, can we continually rent this? And basically we'd be paying for it in two years instead of one year.
You can continue the rent. I still need to fund it.
No, no, I, I know. I know, I understand that. I'm just saying if that's, that, that would be one option that we would have if we're, if we're basically applying anything we have to it, to the rent, to the purchase price.
Correct.
Then that would be an option. Is just continually rent it until it's paid for?
Could do that.
Okay.
Mike, is this part of your, of this year's budget or were you planning on putting a new budget or a new dozer into next year's budget? Or is this just kind of an opportunity?
This is just an opportunity. The, the dozers I have, of course, the oldest one was the one that broke down, that 1978 one that was out on Poison Spider. And it's, you know, it's just old, it's old school too. But this new one just walks circles around. It's a smaller machine, but it's got flotation. It'll go up on top of snow and everything. Just much better for what we ran into this winter and will probably run into again. Doesn't mean it can't break down a new one, but it's just much more versatile than the equipment we have. And we, we could still trade the older machine in when I get it running. They, they won't give me a price on it till we get it fixed, what it'd be worth.
So this isn't part of one cent or part of anything? It's?
This isn't part, the only thing that's in here that's in the budget right now is that drop deck trailer.
Drop deck?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess that's what I was, that's the reason why I was asking is that if we could continually rent this and then we could look at budgeting it next year.
Yeah, there's any, there's any additional cost in renting it versus buying it. It's just however you want to proceed with it.
So even if we, even if we chose to rent it for a full, an additional year and then purchase it in summer of '24, that would be an option.
Yeah. Or if, if you elect not to purchase it, we just are out that much money.
Yeah, I just think we're crazy if we turn something back where it costs us over 200,000 for a new one. Difference when we've already got something that we're, we have access. It's like you said, if we turn it back in, we lose all that and we start all over again. So to me, that doesn't make any sense to turn it back in. I would rather.
But Mike, just to clarify, if we continue to rent it, they'll still apply that?
Still applies towards the purchase.
Good.
Just one question, Mr. Chairman. Mine's real simple. I just hope, and I'm confident in you to do this, that we're prepared for next winter, no matter what, what it brings on. We got to be with, having gone through what we just went through because some people are predicting 10% more snow than we had last winter. I hate to say that, but that's what I'm hearing. Now.
Well, in that case, I think we get three of these.
Whether they're reading tea leaves or not, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Uh, Mr. Larratt, I'll tell you that we were very much prepared this year, as was everybody in the state of Wyoming. Even the ranchers, you know, got surprised. But everybody I've talked to has had equipment failures. Everybody I've talked to has nothing to do with COVID either. There just isn't supply for, for equipment repairs. There aren't mechanics. I just lost another employee today. I've got applications laying on my desk that are, you know, interesting. So everybody's in the same boat. Nobody's got anybody to go to the field to work on anything. They can't get the parts if you bring it in. We had two blades sitting at Cat half the winter, you know, off and on, as did Congress County. So it's not just us. I mean, I don't know how you can prepare for next year any more than we were prepared this year. You know, if our numbers stay up in employees and equipment, we're, we're well equipped. We have 11 motor graders, two dozers, two snow blowers. We kept the mountain open all but one day, which I thought was miraculous. And, you know, I don't know how much more prepared you can be, you know, just by reading the former's almanac. If I, if I was going to react to that, I probably wouldn't walk in here this winter. But no, I, I think Roden Bridge is, has done very well and with what we were handed. And some isolated shutdowns.
Thank you very much. I think you did do a good job.
Mike?
Appreciate it.
On the drop trailer. Give us a little detail as far as what that would actually do to benefit you. I don't know if everybody understands.
The equipment I have right now on the semis is just a standard trailer and you can't run equipment off of it. You have to have a dock. So if I was to haul something out into the country, I can't drop it unless I have a dock. And, and the cars that we were dealt with this winter, you just couldn't get a truck off the road anywhere. So when Fremont County hauled their equipment up here, they had two drop deck trailers. They could unload them right on the highway because the trailer just lays down, the truck drives away and the equipment comes off. Very functional. I mean, the things we have are just old, old technology. And it's not that they won't haul the equipment, they just won't unload it just anywhere you want. And that's real convenient when you don't have to walk a dozer 16 miles to get it to where you need it. So, and we did that.
So this saves time and equipment.
Well, it'll, it'll save a lot of time. It'd be very versatile. You know, I can haul something up the mountain in a fire and unload it right on the road. And there isn't really anywhere up there to unload. Just difficult.
So I think the direction we were looking at on this is as far as the, the dozer goes, continue to rent that. If we can apply it later on, at least we can get to budget and figure out when we'd be able to purchase that the rest of the way. And then we're looking at roughly $9,000 difference on that trailer. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then 36.5 roughly for two of those blades. And those blades need to be ordered before the budget year due to, to be able to get them here by winter.
Get in line. Yeah, because we're going to be in line. There are a lot of people going after V plows after this year.
But we won't have to pay for them until we deliver, until they're delivered correctly?
Till they're delivered.
Okay.
So we're looking at roughly 45, 46,000. So I'm looking over at the clerk, see if we have that somewhere in line item that we could give direction on.
Well, of course we do. No, we, I would say it'd be reasonable. We could take it out of the one cent reserve fund.
It's.
If, if everyone agrees.
Peter?
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with that. I had just one question on the, the dozer rental, but I, I can wait if we want to finish this up.
No, if everybody's okay with it, I, I agree that obviously these V plows need to get going so that we have them. And if we, if we budgeted for that trailer and we have this increase, that needs to be done too. I personally feel that renting it is the, don't, don't give, don't give it back and we lose it. I think we continue to rent it and then let's figure out when we can make that purchase.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think we're all in agreement on, on the drop deck trailer, $9,000. That needs to be done right away. And it's part of this year's budget with the, you know, the $9,000 difference. On the $36,000, if those invoices won't come in until after the fiscal year, are they this fiscal year or are they next fiscal year?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Nicholson, it doesn't matter when it's coming out of the one cent reserve. It's not per fiscal, so it's not that big of a deal.
So then as far as the dozer's concerned, do you have a use for the rental of that dozer during the summer and the next, say, seven months, five months?
We can, we can probably utilize it in a number of places. I've got quite a bit of work in the Willow Creek area still. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things if we're buying it, there's days it's going to be sitting. So.
Well, it, it seems to me that if, if we've got $43,000 in rent that we paid, which we expected to pay in rent anyhow, and then we're going to, the burn rate's 14,500 a month, it's not going to take too many months. And, you know, conceivably, we're upside down if we don't really need the dozer until, say, November, December, realistically anyhow. We're, you're going to need it on a, you know, kind of like how we had this last. realistically anyhow. We're, you're going to need it on a, you know, kind of like how we had this last year, a daily basis. So in my mind, I, I think sometimes it's just the cost of doing business, renting equipment. And I think when you rent one next, this fall, you're going to get the same deal, I think, on a, you know, on applying the rent to the purchase of whatever machine that is. Maybe it's the same one, maybe it's a different one. So I know that's how it works with the green equipment that we buy at the, at the farm. So that's my only hesitation about just a continual rent of, of this machine at the fourteen thousand five hundred a month clip.
I, I understand what you're saying. But I don't agree with it. I think this is something, because of the cost differential between a new piece of equipment and this piece of equipment, prices are just going up. I don't think that we're going to get those kind of rates in the future. I think this is something that's locked in right now. If we continue to purchase this dozer, basically, and that's all we're doing, is applying this rent, basically, we're just extending the, the cost out for everything that's being applied. And even if you don't use equipment, there's a lot of equipment that we have that you don't use year round. You don't use snow plows during the summertime, obviously, but you have to have them when you have to have them. And you don't want to go looking for one when that time comes. You'd rather have it on hand. This year, I know it was almost impossible to find a dozer anywhere. You couldn't, you couldn't go rent one. You couldn't rent a lot of equipment. That was not an option. And so I, I just think that we're a whole lot better off maintaining a piece of equipment that we already have. And whether we rent it on a month, month-to-month basis until it belongs to us, or if we pay it outright. I mean, I think we're a whole lot better off because basically, we're not paying any interest on that rental on month-to-month, are we? So it's going to be the same thing as what it would have been if we paid for it. So we're basically getting a zero percent loan as long as we continue, continue to rent it until we get it paid for.
Mr. Chairman, my, my concern, I, I understand where Mr. Nicolason's coming from. The, and I agree with that, other than the availability of these units, because of their age, somebody's going to buy this up. And then we're going to be looking at the rental on this new electric one that's out, which would, what I would be getting, can't buy the one we got right now. It's not made anymore. So we'd be buying this new electric one, or renting the new electric one would replace this. So there's that gamut of where I'd be this time next year. You know, we, we don't need that new of a machine for what we do. And the amount of time we use a machine, I'd even feel more guilty about a brand-new dozer sitting there than, than I would have used one. But because there are days we don't use it. But when you need it, it's like what we got into this winter. You need it and everybody else needs it. And man, I, I scrambled to get this one. I didn't even know if it'd work, but it's the only thing they had out there. The others were all down there at Congress County, you name it, everybody had them. Knife River sent theirs clear down to I eighty, their D eleven. So when, when we're in those types of situations, you, you may not find this machine. And we're probably going to be paying more then. But I, you know, I understand what Commissioner Nicolason's saying there. I mean, you can, you can put this off and we just, we don't, we're going to lose that money, but it's a call you guys got to make.
Well, the only other concern I'd add to this is that, yeah, we'll, we'll lose that money, but then it looks like we're also trading in a seventy-eight dozer in on this thing, so push that, that down the road, how much more are we going to lose on the value of that? Because it looks like we're at least getting something out of it. So.
It's, it's old, yeah.
What's your recommendation on this?
I, I think you ought to buy it, but if you want to pay it out over time, I, I get that too. It's, we're still going to have to come up with the money, so. I can rent it till I take it back.
Well, I don't really want to rent it forever. I'd like to just get to our next, let's get to the budget portion of this and figure out, you know, if the money's there. If it is, let's just pay for it and be done with it.
Yeah, I agree with it.
Keep renting that until, until we can figure it out.
So the direction we have right now is let's rent it, continue to rent that, use one cent to get the V plows coming and pay the difference in what was budgeted for the trailer. Okay?
So I was also asked to give a report on the mag-chloride applications that we make. Real quickly, we have twelve major roads that we put mag-chloride on. It amounts to twenty-two miles. Three to four of those have been asked by the public to be paved in last year's budget sessions. Right now, we're paying about twenty-eight cents a square yard to put the mag-chloride on, just to have it delivered and sprayed. The new pricing is forty-three cents a square yard. So just for numbers' sake, I budget ninety thousand dollars a year. I spent eighty-eight thousand, three twenty last year, putting the mag on in late fall, August, September, October, depending on the weather. We've tried to do it earlier, but you run into what we've been running into these last few days, and it just washes it off in the barrel pit. So, I mean, I could have it on, but if it doesn't set up for two days, it washes off into the barrel pit. So new pricing, and this is a moving target, even for this year, and this isn't what I put in my budget memo, but this is the numbers I got last week, is a hundred and thirty-two thousand for that same application for these twelve roads. So it's continuing to get more expensive. I don't know if we want to elect to not do as many roads, you know. I've got some that we could probably cut back on. However, we try to do the ones that had homes immediately in front of them. Twelve Mile's one of those. It doesn't have homes all the way along it, but we mag the whole thing because it's a political issue if you don't. Somebody gets left out a little bit if we don't. So, you know, you have Eight Mile, Twelve Mile, Coach Road, we paved a portion of that. And of course, we have Coal Creek and Gary Dome, which are long. And so we, we have magged a number of roads, mostly through public requesting it for the dust suppression. That isn't the real reason I do it. It just helps us hold the road together through the winter. I get nine months out of that road versus if I put it on today, I'll be blading those roads to get them ready for winter anyway by September, and the mag's going to get cut off. You know, it'll, it'll go away when I, when I blade the road. So there won't be any seal on the road for winter, which means like Gary Dome and Coal Creek and those will just pothole. And I think you, Mr. Nicolason can attest to some of that out on Coal Creek. It holds together fairly well. I mean, it gets some holes, but without it, it gets a lot of potholing. And, you know, that's always kind of bit, you have everybody, once they see it and realizes what it does, and it starts wearing out a little bit, then they want more of it on there to cut the dust. And it does, and the minute you put it on, cut the dust, but it eventually wears out a little bit, but it has sealed the road. So water doesn't go into the road. And that's what I like about it. But, you know, if there's a, a demand to do it sooner, we can, we can try some areas and do it. But I'm, I'm probably going to have to do it again in the fall just to seal the road.
Mike, I'm just picking on a specific road, Eight Mile, where it sits under snow a large portion of the year. I, I don't know. That's a short stretch. I don't know if that's something that we'd want to look at to reduce some of that, that dust that's coming off of that. Because that does, I mean, you know, I'm not telling you anything. That drift, those drifts were across Eight Mile, Poison Spider Road this year. They were pretty much impassable a large portion from January until, until the end of March. So I don't know if that would make that much difference as far as what's the stability of those roads are when you're having to go in there and grade that off, you know, when you have areas like Twelve Mile where you don't have those kind of drifts. Do you think that would make a difference?
Well, it's not so much that. It's when, when, when we blade them, in the winter, we don't try to put the blades down and cut the material. We just try to get the snow off, because if you do, you cut the mag off. And there's times we hit, you know, we hit too deep, but, you know, Eight Mile gets terrible drifting, always has. And, and they've always wanted mag on out there sooner than later. There's another side of this too, is what the Roden Bridge does. Here, another week, I think it is, we start the CNFR rodeo. And then in two weeks, we do the CNFR rodeo again. And now we're clearing into July, and the budget doesn't even get approved till around the fifteenth, so you're already in August. And I've never had front money to put the material on in the spring. I hate to do it because of the weather, because I, I, these clouds build up in the afternoons, and those trucks are already coming from Salt Lake or wherever. But they're here, I got to pay for them. And, you know, we, we've held them overnight. They have a pond out here at the airport they can dump in. But, you know, if you get three days of drizzle, those trucks are on standby. And, you know, we've, we've been lucky the way we've done it. We, we've watched the weather really close and order them, and we have canceled them, you know, even in, in the fall. But it's less likely that we're going to get rained out or, you know, a day later get it washed off. And that's sad when that happens, and it has happened even in the fall. So, you know, that's, that's my side of it. But, you know, if you, if you want to do more of it, 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 it's not going to just happen tomorrow with the labor that I have.
I have a question, something you commented on earlier, people wanting the road partially paved in some parts of the county. Is that, would that, it sounds to me like that could be a cost-saving to do that. I mean, I don't know. But if you, if it's paved, then it holds up better than magnesium, I guess.
You, you can hold that argument. It's, it's the issue coming up with a million dollars a mile to pave it versus what this costs.
Is that all it costs?
Yeah, it's just a drop in the bucket. But-
In the long run though, is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, you can, you can run that, and I have given those numbers out. It just, you know, it's what you want to come up with to do. We, we have the county road funds, but those are all committed to projects right now. And, and some of those are, you know, one of those is one of these roads to get paved. Poison Spider between Eight Mile and, and Twelve Mile. But makes sense.
Well, why, I was thinking along those lines. I was shocked one time when I read that all the police cars in Stuttgart are Mercedes-Benzes. And you think, really? Well, what they say is, is that they last five times as long as like a Ford or something like that, and that, that it actually saves the government money. So that's all I was curious about, is if we paved some roads in the end run, would we have saved a bunch of money in, over the several years that pavement would last as opposed to doing and labor of putting mag on these roads every year. And I, I have had people call me and wonder if you could put some on this summer to cut down on the dust. And then you kindly told me what that costs, and it's, it's pretty expensive. So I'm just, I'm just curious about the overall long-term effect of getting a better product, and does it cost more now, but does it save us money down the road?
Yeah, well, you could, you can hold that argument, Mr. Laird. It's, it's an issue of availability of funding. So.
That doesn't answer my question. If we had, let's say, let's pretend like we have the money. Would that-
We'll pave every road.
Would, what, what would it be better in the long run to do that?
Well-
To maintain it every-
On some of these roads, yes. On some of them, no, because the speeds are going to be hellacious. I mean, like Frey Crossing, you couldn't pave that if you wanted to going down to that railroad track. In the winter, we wouldn't even get a plow truck down it or back up it. But there's areas that it just doesn't make sense. I mean, everybody wants their road paved. I'd like to have mine paved in front of my house. But the life of pavement used to be twenty years. The oils they put in it today, it's good if three years, in my opinion. Look at the city streets that have been repaved in the last five years. They're shot.
They are.
So, you know, everybody talks-
They chip seal those.
Yeah, well, we've, we've chip sealed a number of our roads too, but, yeah, we, we have about a hundred and fifty miles of paved road now. And, you know, it's, it's what we plow.
Out of our eight hundred miles?
Out of our eight hundred miles, yeah.
It's a curiosity.
Sure, I understand.
Okay. Do we have anything else we need to cover then, or?
I guess, unless you want to make a decision on doing mag sooner or not, but-
I don't think so right now. I think that's something that, is what you just said. By the time we did everything, you're occupied from now until the end of June.
Well, I'm putting a lot of roads back together right now, culverts, and this last week didn't help a bit.
I think this is something that maybe would be something that we would look at if we're in the future and not for right now.
Yeah, I would say we-
Just an exploratory.
Have some excess funding and, you know, put more in the budget that I could do a few of them earlier, the ones where the homes are right there, like Eight Mile.
Right.
Twelve Mile, that half a mile stretch in there where the homes are right on it.
Yep.
I, I could get that, but-
Small shots.
I wouldn't throw them all in that bucket, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're up.
We do not, oh, thank you. I got notification that Judy, Judith Meyer, she's going to be moving, so we need to find a replacement for the Historic Preservation Commission. There hasn't been any, any bites, any interest. I need to know what you guys want to do for the plant, the Development Board of Appeals. There's only been the, the two recommendations and then the at-large. I don't believe we need those, but I can double-check on that. Because we have one, then there's, you're going to notice the Casper reentry, they're all in red. Their applications are coming, but those ones you guys won't hold interviews for because they are, most of them are all Office of Virtue except for one of them. And the board kind of needs specific stomachs for it. Community action, I'm waiting for Charmaine to get with me. There was a question on an appointment. Kathy Carr for the Library Board, that one, she is requesting reappointment. Then Tiffany Gamble as well. Planning and zoning, we received one application around eleven o'clock, and that's it. Nobody is requesting reappointment. So we will need to find those, we need to find applicants for that one. And then there's the Board of Health. So I just need direction. They close on the nineteenth, and obviously, we can leave them open if we need to. I have ran the, you'll see down at the bottom of the spreadsheet when I put everything on the website. I've ran an ad in the newspaper, Sunday papers. I figured those were the most viewed. So ran that on April ninth and then May seventh. And then the board memos went out on April eleventh. My press release went out on April fourth. I emailed a reminder to all of our boards and the applicants if I had their information on the eighth. And so, yeah, so I just wanted to give you a heads up. I have not heard from Bill Knight. I did email him. I don't know, usually he does respond either way, so I don't know if maybe he's either been busy or he's been on a vacation. I did speak with James Bell, and you'll notice all the ones in the red and the- I did speak with James Bell, and you'll notice all the ones in the red and the yes, I have gotten the applications from them, or I've gotten a confirmation that they're coming.
Okay, so can we run down just real quick from the top to the bottom? James Bell is, so are there just three positions with the hospital board of trustees?
Yes. So as it sits with that, is Matt Grant moved, so that was a shame. I was sad to see him go. He was amazing. And then Bill Knight and James Bell. And so you guys, if Bill Knight, so right now, I haven't heard from Bill Knight, so I'm taking it we have two positions to fill.
Okay, and all these are supposed to close on the 19th?
Yes.
So I would suggest we leave that one open until filled.
But do we need to affirm Jim Bell?
Yeah, I just need direction on if you guys want to interview, if you wanna, if you guys just want to appoint. Got on full of ums today, so, yeah.
Yep, so let's talk about them as we go, because, I mean, if somebody, you know, I don't agree with just putting somebody in a position if we don't know who they are. I would rather interview them. But if somebody knows these people, and I'll give you, for instance, I don't want to jump to the bottom of the page, but I will. I was on the travel and tourism council with Tiffany Gamble. If nobody else were to put in, I would reappoint her immediately because she is very, very, she is needed on that board.
Mr. Chairman, so none of these are closed until the 19th?
Yeah. Yeah, the 19th is when, is what I said in the newspaper.
Yep, but what I'm saying is, is that on the 19th? If some of these don't have other applicants to put in, then I think that they, in our, because we won't have a meeting.
I'm okay with that.
Yep, yep, so.
If someone does apply to that one, for example, that one tourism, then you'll get back to us and be more automatically appointed.
Yeah. Yeah, I just didn't, I ran out of time, and I didn't have time to update the spreadsheet. So we received a Ray Schulte, or Ray Schultz, for the planning and zoning commission, and he has recommendation from, from a Park County Commissioner and a Hot Springs County Commissioner. But I didn't have a chance to write that on the sheet. So for P&amp;Z, he would be an applicant. But before I actually can put him on the list, I do need to confirm if he lives within an incorporated area or outside an incorporated area.
And being that they're new applicants, those I do feel that we need to do interviews with. So if that's one for planning and zoning that you received, I'm sure there will be another one by the end of the week.
Okay.
Did you say you had one that requested reappointment?
From P&amp;Z?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, okay, sorry, I just-
Yeah, none of the P&amp;Z people, members have requested reappointment. And then same as, I haven't heard anything with community action, but I do need to get with Charmaine again on that one.
Michelle, do you know if the, on the development appeals board, do those have to be, is there, I mean, it says at-large, do they have to have, do they have to be contractors?
No, no, and Justin sent out a memo on all of that.
Okay.
For the two they do?
For two, yeah, they, there's the, the at-large are just anybody. But, so you'll see that one is Ena Cart and one's Tim Shank, you know? And I think there's another one on the board, I can't remember current, well, I think the, no, the one, Ben Barker, he is, I think he has a specialty. I don't think he's at-large.
But if they're not contractors, they don't have anything to do with it, then I'll think it's something else. That's what that board's all about.
Well, yeah, no, yeah, no, I know, I just, I'm just asking if that was a, if they had to be a-
And I know that the health board, oh, sorry, sorry, Steve, you wanted to go, or Mr. Chairman, you wanted to start at the top, sorry.
Okay, so, hospital board of trustees, two open positions. One, James Bell's been on there, and he's asking for reappointment, correct? Does anybody know James?
I do.
Are you guys okay with him?
He's a retired-
Mr. Chairman, he's a retired attorney, and I don't know about his service on the hospital board, but he's upstanding, and I can't, I don't know of a reason to not reappoint him.
And he does have a board recommendation to be reappointed, so.
Yeah, he'd be good.
I would say we move forward with him and leave that open until those other two positions are filled.
Mr. Chairman, how often are the meetings for the planning and development, planning and zoning, or Michelle?
The second Tuesday of every month. So unless there's something that doesn't go on and they need to cancel, then they'll cancel. But it's a standing appointment the second Tuesday of every month.
A second Tuesday of every month? I'm just asking a guy that you all know if he's interested, and that's the question he asked me. So I'm gonna tell him second Tuesday of every month.
Okay, so moving on to the planning and development board of appeals, on that, you might see in this right, there's actually three openings now and one coming up at the end of the year. Okay? And out of all of those, none of them are asking to be reappointed.
Well, I, correct, because I'm going off of a memo that Justin sent me, and I didn't bring it. So, yeah, so that is correct, because he went through and followed the bylaws, and then he, you guys might be able to confirm, I do believe he spoke to the commissioner sometime last year, and he did the research and gathered all the applicants and all that good stuff. And then here's the memo based on that.
Okay, and so we have four people interested?
Yeah.
Okay, so those we need to do interviews on?
Yeah, so, and then like, but like you're electrical and you're mechanical, you only have one applicant for each of those positions.
And I know, I know Scott Molson.
So, so one will have to be electrical, one will have to be mechanical, one's plumbing.
Sure.
We only have one electrical applicant?
As of the 19th. So if nobody else applies, the electrical and mechanical move forward.
Okay.
Michelle, what about the historical preservation commission? How often do they meet?
They, they meet once a month, I believe, or as needed. I'm not as involved with that board. I mean, I work with Rick quite a bit, just because of budget stuff, but not as much for the board. I can get the info, I don't have my phone, I don't-
Okay.
So, once a month, or as needed.
Let's ask questions as we go down them, please, so that we can get this done. So the only thing I'm seeing on the electrical and mechanical, I get that, as long as, as long as somebody on the commission here knows them and is confident in them moving forward, then I'm okay with that. But if nobody knows them, I think you need to interview them so that you're not putting somebody in a position that may not be qualified to be in that position.
I know Scott Molson personally, and he is very qualified.
I agree. And it's M-A-L-S-O-M.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. So we'll see where we end up on the 19th on that one. Now, to the historic preservation commission. That person needs to be replaced, and we don't have a replacement for him, so.
Yeah, and I haven't received any interest in the historic preservation commission. I went back through all of my applications from two years ago, because I don't throw anything, and none.
Okay, so we'll leave that open until filled, which I'm sure Dallas has filled within the next 20 minutes.
Well, I'm, just so you, I guess that's a joke, but I didn't get it.
Well, I know, because you're not following with this.
Well, I was trying to get a guy who, it's hard to find, it's Keith Garlick, and so I'm trying to find out. He wanted to know if there were any, I told him there were some openings, he wanted to know how often they met. So that's what I was trying to find out.
Okay, so Casper reentry center, on that one, these are the ones you're talking about that are specific? And I know every one of these people, so I understand.
Yeah, so you'll see that there's probation and parole and the judge, and then, and Michael Steinberg is the citizen appointed to it, and, yeah, you have to have a certain kind of-
Okay. Citizens Transportation Advisory Commission, only, we have one position, Keith Tyler for that one, he's asking to be reappointed, they're asking to reappoint, to have him reappointed. So if nothing comes in on 19th, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yes, fine with me.
Community action partnership?
I need to visit with Charmaine one more time on that one, but I don't believe this Nancy Briggs has shown any interest. And then there's another individual that was back and, you know, finding out, so.
Okay, so if we don't have anything by the 19th, that one should be kept open until filled. Board of trustees for the library, it looks like-
Kathy's on there right now.
She wants to be on it, remain on it.
Yeah, and they've sent her a letter of support, too, so.
Okay. And the three that you have on planning and zoning, you have one coming in, probably two by the end of the week. We need to do interviews on them, and then keep that open until filled for the last position. Travel and tourism, if nobody else puts in, I personally would say that I think Tiffany needs to stay on there. She's a great asset to them. And then as far as the Neptuna County Board of Health, it has to be a physician, and it looks like we have somebody, a physician that wants to be on there.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, Ann has shopped around. Ann always takes care of her board on finding them, and she really does recommend this individual.
Good.
Michelle, I, I don't think this was mentioned, but on the planning and development board of appeals, how often do they meet?
Only as needed. So anytime when there's an issue that comes up, so they'll go one, they'll go a year with no meetings. I think they've gone two or three years without having a meeting. So it's only when it hits the fan they have to meet.
We'd like to have an arbitration.
Yeah, I figure as much.
It's a complaint.
I speak loud enough.
And then I got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, moving on to the grid, I do have a typo on there, I apologize. So, we do have to have one last transfer of funds for the year. We approve the budget, we're scheduled to approve the budget hopefully the 5th of July, but if we have to, we can do it that third Monday. But we are going to need one last transfer of the funds. Are June 26th or 27th what works best for all of you?
Say that date again.
We're gonna, June 26th or 27th, and when you guys come in for that last transfer of funds, it's gonna be a five-minute meeting, no comments other than has to do with that transfer.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'll explain it a little bit. So we have cut off dates for our vouchers to be received by the payables department, and that is, I believe it's the 16th. So then I go through all the budgets and to make sure there's no overages or any transfers that need to be done. And since we go so far into mid-June, is receiving those vouchers to be paid out of this current budget, many times we will have to have a meeting at the end of June to cover any account lines or bottom lines that have gone over for projects or expenses that weren't approved in the original budget request. So that's how we typically handle those. Like Michelle said, it's about a five-minute deal. I just give a presentation, no public comment, and we just get it taken care of to balance the budget. As far as the budget approval goes, this year, we have it on June 5th, you said?
July.
Oh, excuse me, July 5th. We have until the 3rd Monday into July to do that, and my prediction is we are gonna need that time. And so if you guys could just kind of keep that in the back of your mind, I would appreciate that. I don't want to rush through it. Having new commissioners, I think we're gonna need to get everyone's feet wet and be methodical in what we're doing with the budget this year.
So how about we do that on June 27th? That way, we just keep it consistent on a Tuesday, and it gives you an extra day anyways.
Thank you.
And what time you want to do it? 10 o'clock?
Earlier, what's the matter?
What day of the week is that?
Tuesday. Well, or we can just do a conference call.
I just said that. I'm trying to get Garlick. Talk to Garlick tonight.
Yeah, because we called in, someone was called in last year for that, so we didn't even have to all be here.
So do we want to do 8:30?
Yeah, we'll do it early in the morning.
Thank you.
Sure. 8:30. You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just so you know, we're doing BOCC resolution amendment. We're gonna be doing a BOCC resolution amendment.
Okay.
So we'll change the budget hearing to the 3rd Monday. Heard a boss.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Christie, I've only got you a half an hour behind, so come on up.
There we go. So I just wanted to come in front of you guys today, thank you for the time, to kind of give you a quick review of some code enforcement items that have, that have come, God, come to light. So, as you all know, we have one code enforcement officer. Her job is to investigate violations, perform site inspections, work to prevent and abate the violations, and track compliance on those compliance, or track progress on the compliance agreements. Majority of our violation investigations are in response to submitted complaints to the office, so we're really just complaint-driven through code enforcement. But of course, when she's out investigating one area, if there's something in that area that also needs to be addressed, she will write violations for those as well. We have two types of violations. We have nuisance violations and zoning violations. And those two types of violations have different paths for correction and abatement. So in nuisance, we send out a letter, the property owner has 14 days to remedy the nuisance or contact the office to enter into a compliance agreement. The compliance agreement will have a date that's agreed on by both the code enforcement officer and the resident, and once corrected, the agreement of the violation will be canceled. For the small percentage of violations that either the property owner never made contact with the office, or for compliance agreements that are not upheld, our regulations stipulate that our department will work with legal to proceed with the next steps. And currently, our office is working with legal to define that process and procedures for that. We have a few cases that we've not been able to move forward on for a while due to lack of clarity in this process, so we're working to outline that process with legal, and then we'll be seeking direction from the board. Some of these properties were presented at the beginning of the year, and we still need to determine the best approach to handling those properties. The other is a zoning violation. Again, that is a 10-day working days to correct once that violation has been given. And according to our zoning resolution, if there is no compliance on that, our next step is to coordinate with legal to determine the process and procedures for handling those cases. And so, again, we're working with legal to outline those processes and procedures and get it set so that we can move forward on some of these. There is a small percentage that we are not able to make- There is a small percentage that um, we are not able to make contact with, and so we'll need to work out the best procedure for those property owners as well. But part of the process that we do in code enforcement is offer assistance. So we have our neighborhood cleanup days. Um, we have one coming up this weekend. I gave you guys each a flyer. For the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, we'll be having a cleanup at Geiger's. It will go from ten to seven on Thursday and Friday, and eight to one on Saturday. Any of the residents from that area will be able to um, bring their items to that location, and we'll have dumpsters divided for all of the um, waste to take to the bell fill. Additionally, code enforcement um, offers passes, the bell fill passes, to residents to assist in remedying their violations. Currently, we've issued about twenty-five thousand dollars in um, bell fill passes, but only around twelve thousand of that has actually been utilized by the residents. So those passes do expire with the budget year of June thirtieth. So many residents have found that those bell fill passes are helpful, and, and our office is happy to provide that assistance. We have one resident though, that um, brought some, some issues to light, is that uh, he's in a compliance agreement. We've been offering assistance to him, um, paying for disposals, but a large barrier to compliance. But then we looked at what it would cost to complete the remediation of his site, um, and it would be over six thousand dollars to um, completely remedy the, the violation. And so unfortunately, at this point, we can't offer, you know, that additional assistance without direction. And it's brought to light that we need to reach out to other entities in our community and see if we can develop a strategy for helping our residents who are in need in this way. Again, this is gonna take some time, but the goal would be to create a pool of resources for our residents to be able to um, assist in providing solutions and connections for these residents. But for this case, highlighted the need for code enforcement to establish a policy on the amount of assistance per property um, that we can offer. Staff um, would suggest that we set that amount to about three thousand dollars per property. Um, and so we're seeking um, direction on a value to put on that policy as a limit. Once we've hit that dollar value, we would proceed to other options that we might have available um, to provide assistance, or other means through legal in order to provide additional assistance.
Looked like you wanted to say something. Well, go ahead.
Well, I was waiting for one of my other commissioners to, to jump in. Three thousand dollars seems a little high um, to me. But I guess I could be persuaded if, if you can help me understand that. Part of my feeling on this is, um, as I understand it, this is just for violators or non-compliant um, properties. So we're kind of, um, we're kind of rewarding the violators and the people who aren't violators but may need some help or some incentive, but haven't reached the threshold of being part of code enforcements um, on the, on their top ten list. Um, so, so to me, I understand what we're trying to do. And I, I'm, I wanna be on board with this. But I know a lot of properties out there um, that could use some assistance. It could incentivize them, and they're not even on your radar yet, which is a good thing. So, so I'm not sure, um, I don't wanna overly complicate things, but it seems to me that this is only uh, one side of the coin.
Mr. Chairman, so the bell fill passes are available to any resident that, that comes into the office that is seeking help with, with issues, but you are correct, the majority of the, the people that we are engaging with are ones that um, you know, have been contacted.
I have a question. So the one that's six, six thousand, is that the one where the guy put the two trailers together and then build a little Quonset hut, and then he's got a stove that heats everything? Is it, is it that one?
No, it is not that property.
Cause that is an issue, isn't it?
There are multiple properties throughout the county that we need to evaluate.
And there are people who just don't have the money to fix it, right?
There, there are various reasons for, for some of the violations, and there's a portion of our, of our population that um, could use more assistance.
So that means, does that mean they don't have the money to fix the problem?
There's, there's a variety of reasons of, of whether it's money or solutions or.
Why we should help, help them. If they have the money, I'm assuming they don't have the money, and that's why you're asking for this go up to three thousand?
This is a way for us to be able to contribute to a cleanup, um, you know, with, without a particular judgment and, and be able to offer some, some assistance to remediate a violation.
Well, is this something we're required to do by statute?
Statute gives us authority to remediate these, and it gives a statute to enforce our zoning vi- our zoning resolution. But I don't believe that it requires us, that we have to.
Well, does it say anything that we have to help people that could afford it themselves?
No, I don't believe it says anything like that.
Well, I'm kind of at a loss with what you're saying. I think we should help people that have no money and can't afford it, and I think the people who have money and can't afford it, I don't think we should be paying anything. That's my own personal thought.
Commissioner Laird, I would say that that all comes down to the situation itself. I mean, somebody cannot have money but be a hoarder, and then are we gonna expend thousands of dollars to clean up something that they've acquired over time?
That's, I thought I said that, but that's what I agree with.
But I guess what you're saying is if they have money, then we should not help them. If they don't have money, we should help them, but I, I say it's on a case-by-case basis. You've gotta see what's actually happening on the property before you decide one way or another to help them or not.
I hear that, but I think if people can afford their own cleanup, I don't know that the commission should be paying money. I said, I, I, I agree with you, but my thought is, is that if they can afford their own cleanup, the enforcement takes over. If they can't afford it, I think that to help the, the county people out that can't afford these things, um, yeah, I think we should help them.
So Mr. Chairman, I, I think that working with legal through this process, we can kind of help define which, which avenue and which steps there are available for us to take on a case-by-case basis or a general basis of, of assistance or, or violation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Christie, um, the neighborhood cleanups that we're doing next weekend, on average, or what had those cost in the past? Do you know?
The last one that we did, Mr. Chairman, was in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and the cost was somewhere around thirty thousand, I wanna say. Unfortunately, Lori's out sick today, so I don't have a lot of the hard numbers. But that is what we're anticipating to spend this year, is about thirty thousand. Again, if we don't hit that, we have some other opportunities that we'd like to present this again, uh, have another weekend in another location, and see if we can get more residents to participate.
Commissioner Mill?
So this, this cleanup, this, on this weekend coming up, you said that's for that area? Or is it for the county in general?
Code enforcement has put the posts up just in that area, um, and has not advertised this across the county. There was some concern about the volume of people um, that will be able to serve. We have um, been unable to secure additional volunteers for this weekend. So it will just be staff from the department. And so I think that was one of the main concerns with this, since we haven't done it in a few years, not having any additional volunteers um, to expand it too much further. Mr. Chairman, in regards to, to three thousand dollars, um, that is just a ballpark figure. Going with a, a mobile home is fifteen hundred dollars. If you're taking a mobile home, you would have additional costs along with that. The roll-off containers are three hundred and fifty-five dollars just to have them delivered. And then on return, they're charged the per-ton rateage. So um, you know, if you had a couple of those and a mobile home, you'd be up towards that three thousand dollar or over it. And so it, it was just the best starting point for a number.
So I guess on average, how many mobile homes do you remove? And if you don't remove that many, on average, what does a residence generally run you? Uh, how much do you put out?
I'm just gonna go off of what we've, what we've had turned back in so far this year. And I can't tell you like, any particular property that's used all this money. I can just, at this point, the only data I have is, is what's been turned in and for what. So at the scale house, um, it's been six thousand two hundred dollars that has been um, redeemed. Tires um, have been almost fifteen hundred dollars, and general passes have been a little over four thousand dollars. So I can't tell you what, what one particular resident, what it would, what it would take. And if we wanna reduce that amount to a fifteen hundred dollar limit, I, I have no reservations about that. Again, three thousand dollars was, was the first um, kind of evaluation if you had a mobile home with additional pieces, the estimated value that, that it would cost.
Well, I agree with what Commissioner Nicolason was saying. I think three thousand is a little bit too high. If a person has a mobile home involved, then I think that's a, that's a separate, that's a separate thing on its own. I, I'd rather see it maybe fifteen hundred dollars, maybe a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars. And then if you have a situation like that that comes in where a mobile home needs to be removed, then I think I'd look at that as a extenuating cir- yeah, an exception to it, cause it's not so much as the junk around it, but it's an actual larger piece that needs to be removed.
Mr. Chairman, um, yeah, I'd, I'd be okay with fifteen hundred dollars uh, per property plus an additional uh, fifteen hundred dollars if there's a mobile home that's appropriate to be removed. One, one question is, is this um, for property forever, or is this per property per year? Yeah, I, I can see maybe a situation in which they just can't, they don't have the bandwidth to get everything done in a, in a season, a summer, for example. And I, I think that you guys would probably be willing to work with, you know, somebody that's gonna be receptive uh, to this, to work, okay, this summer we're gonna attack half of it, next summer we're gonna attack half of it. You know, I think there are those um, extreme circumstances where, you know, maybe that's appropriate. But in general, it seems a cap of fifteen hundred is appropriate.
I guess take that just one step further. I would think that if you had a large enough property that you really had a problem with, then I would say per year. Uh, like if you're gonna take a chunk out of it this year, it's fifteen hundred dollars. If you didn't have a trailer, and then next year another fifteen, I don't have a problem in doing that cause you're cleaning that property up over time.
Mr. Chairman, do you think maybe we should give her the general number that you guys are suggesting? With the admonition that if she comes to us and says, here's the real problem that's gonna cost five thousand, that we take another look at it then?
Well, I think that's what we're saying, is a cap at fifteen hundred. If there's circumstances above that, then Christie would come back to us and tell us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for that.
So Mr. Chairman, declare whether that would be fifteen hundred a year per property.
Yes, ma'am. And if there's extenuating circumstances, that you, you can certainly come back to us and talk to us about it.
Now, to, to Dallas's point, as far as whether the, the landowner can afford it themselves, I, I, I'm not sure if we are in the business of, of cleaning up everybody's property out there. It would seem if they can afford it, then they should do it. Or if for whatever reason they're physically unable to do it, that would be another reason why we could come in and help them out. But if they're physically able, if they can afford it, then I'm not entirely sure we use the public's money to ke- clean up private property.
I agree. So if you're physically or financially unable to do it, then that's when this would come into effect.
There, there might be another issue there too, where we might ought to do it, and that is if it constitutes a health hazard, or it's hazardous to neighbors and, and, and even the person themselves, uh, we probably would wanna intervene there, I would say.
Mr. Chairman, um, and, and I do, I agree with that, Commissioner Laird. How, Christie, how do you and the county determine who is financially in need and not in need?
Well, Mr. Chairman, that was gonna be one of my questions, is um, under that classification, and if, and if we're going to establish a, a dollar amount that's available, would an application be um, needed in this case of, of we have this available to you, but I need you to fill out this paperwork and, and supply us with some information?
Well, and, and so here's, here's the rabbit hole we're going down. So is that under oath? Do they provide any supporting documents? Do they provide a tax return? What is the level? Is it, is it poverty level? Is it poverty, is it a hundred and twenty-five percent of the United States poverty level? Is, you know, this, this is, in my estimation, um, an, an area that is maybe not what you and your department signed up for, or maybe what your expertise is in. You know, um, and I think it's, it's uh, we, hell, we can't even, at the county level, do this ourselves. We punt to the state on property tax relief, you know, in terms of that determination. So um, I, I don't, I, I hear what the commissioners are saying about some sort of, you know, requirement that they have financial need. I just don't know where to draw the line. I don't know who's gonna do it, and I don't know what we're gonna reasonably expect of the public to, to prove it.
Mr. Chair, there, there's also the issue of providing support for an individual, and so that can only be done under, under limited circumstances based on income. And I, I think that's why we need a policy laying out the rules, and so everyone's clear, and we have time to research and say, okay, well, under these circumstances, if the board chose, they could do X. I don't even know what X is. But just to say, we're gonna help out poor people more than others is, is not a good idea.
Um, Mr. Chairman, on the, on another hand, also, to, to Chairman Nicolason's point, we're to support, I mean, if we don't set something up, then what we do, if we wanna do this program, is we set a budget. Once we hit it, we're done. Whether it's twenty thousand or whatever, we hit that number, no more program for the rest of the year.
It should be part of the budget. And I think.
Good idea.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a, a line item budget that covers um, this item. That is also included the um, the cleanup.
Mr. Chairman, one cent sixteen, there was a hundred thousand dollars in a line item. However, if my memory serves me, um, in one cent seventeen, that is not part of those approved projects.
Is it in planning?
So, that was news to me, because we did put it into the line, into the budget, but not necessarily into the line items. So it's in the budget request as was presented last year.
Is it part of your annual budget?
It was part of the request, but it wasn't in the line items.
Was it part of the 1.17 request that were submitted last August-ish?
I will have to get back to you on that one.
Yeah, because I don't think there was any money approved in '17, as the approved projects stand now. However, that can be, you know, amended as we go forward. But you did not put it in this current fiscal budget request that you submitted to me on the 24th, correct?
It is in the narrative.
But it is not in.
But it is not in the calculation, due to information that I received elsewhere.
Yeah, so there was $100,000 that was in this current fiscal that, I don't know, has fallen under the cracks or what has happened, but that has not all been expended.
I think we.
Should I fuss with her and say something?
Didn't we, I can't remember exactly, but I remember seeing something of substance then. But I think it was, the discussion was to move it to the annual budgets.
I don't recall that conversation. That's, I can look through my notes, but I.
Yeah. We'll figure that out directly. I think to come back to what, to the discussion we're having as far as setting a limit, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this all stems off of, basically, you've had one person that has used how much assistance?
Almost $5,000.
Yeah, so they're closing in on $5,000 that they've used for one property that's already been given out to them. So I think that's where this question is. Where, what is the threshold that we want to put down to say, once Christie hits that, that's it, no more, unless they come and talk to us? Because at $5,000, I mean, that's gone completely down the road, and nobody's really aware of, aware that that's even taken place. So that's why we're having that portion of the discussion, is where are we cutting that off? And $1,500 is what I'm hearing, but anything after that, you'll need to come back and find the board.
Of course, Mr. Chairman, I agree with the county attorney. I don't think we have the authority to do this just on a general basis. Statutorily, you just can't go out and, you know, decide, okay, we're going to help you clean up your place. I think we can do it under certain circumstances, which is there's a health hazard or there's a danger to other people.
Right.
So I wouldn't put it wide open right now. In fact, I would think we would need some thought on this and have a memo from the county attorney, if we can even do it.
I believe in the past, there's also been the point where we've gone in, cleaned up or whatever, and then we potentially had or did put a lien on the property or on the tag, on the title, until we got paid back, reimbursed. So there is that option as well.
Jim, I wouldn't want to see us just go clean up a guy's house and put a lien on it. I'm not sure that would be legal.
This is like, this has always been a last, last-ditch effort, yeah. So we've gone years without any response, or taken it to court and they pay the $25, fine, and then they continue to leave it as a mess, so.
Isn't it, you know, and I don't know, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
No, you can.
For the county attorney, I mean, I do recall at least some cities, I think Title 15 pertaining to municipalities, the prohibition against giving public funds out just to any individuals. You know, it seems a lot cleaner to me to do these neighborhood cleanups. I know that's not the targeted approach where we have these, you know, top-10 lists or top-20 lists, but I'm fully in favor of these neighborhood cleanups, because I think that that's available to anybody. And I think that's part of our job, but this is kind of an area that I'd like a little more guidance on.
As it relates to specific properties.
Yep, no, that's where I was headed, was just have you look into it and see what we can and can't do in these circumstances.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, also on the cleanup, we have some of the bailfill passes ready to go, so if somebody shows up with a large volume of items that we can't take, large item of tires or anything that would overfill our dumpsters at the place, we are planning just to send them to the bailfill with those passes, instead of taking them at there and filling our stuff.
Okay.
As an option.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
That's enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything for here. A few things for executive session is all.
Okay.
For the consent agenda, what do we have? We have the 307 horse racing.
307 horse racing resolution. I would just say that Kyle Ridgeway was very accommodating.
He redid the agreement, didn't he?
Yeah, and.
And you're satisfied with it?
Very much. And he understands our concerns for public health, safety, and welfare.
He's a good guy.
And, you know, I think that this should be, this resolution should be a form that we implement when we're faced with these in the future. I think that's the only responsible thing to do at this point.
I agree with you.
And you will have another one coming to you real soon.
Have we given any consideration to this, like, I think we have, Tracy said we have a person wanting this liquor license that was out at Racks. Somebody now has reapplied for it, is that true?
Well, and, Mr. Chair, that's not on the agenda for tonight. What I would like to point out, Commissioner Milne pointed out that we have the MOU between the Neptuna County, Converse County, and multiple other local governments with regards to the Cedar Springs for impact funds. And I know this is on the city of Casper's agenda for tonight. The main, the main thing of any interest is Exhibit A, which is at the last page of that document, which is a table of all of the entities that are involved and lists the amounts that, the funds that they say they're going to be impacted, that amount they're going to be impacted for, and so they're requesting that amount. And then this is, the MOU is submitted to the industrial siding division, and then a hearing will be held, and we'll have to support the numbers. Each of the entities will have to support their numbers. But I think we've got a lot of reasonable amounts, and here in the Neptuna County is very reasonable and fairly specific.
Look, Charmaine, those numbers are pretty much match the previous Cedar Springs numbers, if I understand correctly. I mean, relatively speaking, so they're, as far as the justification goes, it would be fairly simple, straightforward. Maybe straightforward would be a better way to put that.
The MOU is about the same, the justification is similar. The amounts are a lot less for Neptuna County entities, because it's farther away from Neptuna County.
Mr. Chairman, and Charmaine, are we committed to supporting the numbers that we see in Exhibit A presented by other governmental agencies?
Yes, that's where.
That's kind of the basis of the MOU?
Yes, it is.
So are we, the one that stood out to me was the $1.2 million requested by the town of Glen Rock. Do you have a basis of understanding for what they were doing over there on that side of the line?
I do not. So that is not helpful. I, what time is it? I can see what I can find out before 5:30. Are there any other numbers that you want details on?
Did Converse County come up with a number, or were they?
They did, and Michelle has the final table.
Yeah, it's me.
The final table is in your guys' packet.
Uh.
Your evening packet.
You'll have an evening packet.
But I can get you, if that's what you guys want right now, I can get it.
I didn't see it the other night.
Yeah.
It's not in my packet.
So if approximately $9 million is available, I don't think these numbers add up to anywhere close to that. So what happens with the remaining funds?
I don't know. If we can't show that we need them, then, yeah.
So there's only like, plus or minus three and a half million on this?
Right. So the whole process, thought process on this with most, with pretty much everybody, maybe Glen Rock, was that, you know, this is the third bite of the apple. A lot of these costs we've, that we initially incur have already been paid for. At this point, where these are the reoccurring impacts that we'll have, so speaking for, like, Neptuna County, will be impacted through the taxes, the hotel taxes, the Health Department increase in inspections, et cetera, et cetera, and whatever the.
Fire.
Fire, yeah. So the sheriff could have added some to his, but he said he was fine at this point. While it doesn't, there is that upper limit of $9 million, nobody's, there's no.
So does the, I'm sorry.
You've got to attest that those are actual impacts.
That's fine. My question is, does the $9 million, is that paid by the developer, and then the difference, the balance, in this case roughly $5.5 million retained by the state? Or is, does the developer only come up with the impact funds sought, which is, you know, in this $3.5 to $4.5?
Yeah, I believe they come up. The developer comes up with that. If it doesn't go up to the nine, then they don't pay that.
Okay. So the developer only has to pay impact funds requested and up to?
That are.
Okay.
That are approved.
Approved and requested. Requested and approved.
Yes.
Congress County's $1.5, okay. So $4.6, all right. Thank you.
And so, Converse County, they've, they're trying to include some of the road impacts that aren't necessarily roadway-related. So there's that, that's why, Jim, why that, Converse County's kind of increased that. It was lower, but they're shooting for a couple extra things. Just because we have a MOU doesn't mean that the siding will award everybody exactly what they ask for. They may come in and say, Neptuna County, we agree with everybody, but Neptuna County, Neptuna County, you only get $100,000. It is what it is. But we, when they have the meeting, the hearing, each one of these parts of the MOU are going to have to stand up and attest to what they, their impacts, and so, and justify it. And that was the request by all the, at least Neptuna County's offices and divisions and whatnot, was that, you can't, it's not, we're not just going to the candy store, we're going to justify what we're getting.
Do we have a date for that hearing?
There is a date.
I don't remember.
It's maybe June 8th. I don't remember off the top of my head. It's not very far away.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So, and we are past the point where it should have been in, but usually the siding council will take this in consideration anyways, that we do have a MOU.
Okay, anything else on?
So on the 1.2.
I'm sending an email right now to see what.
If we pass the MOU, then we're agreeing that, yeah, we support them in whatever ask it is that they're doing. If we don't, if we don't support it, then, I don't know, in our resolute, I don't know how that, then.
We're saying we support it, they still have to prove it.
Sure.
Oh, and this is still up to the industrial siding board.
Yes.
That's the bottom line. Is it just something that we?
Always is.
Yeah, no, I'm just reaffirming that. So it's just because we agree to this and we accept this tonight, doesn't mean that these numbers won't change. I know the first time, I know Converse County was asking for everything the first time around, and they got divvied up quite a bit, but that's just.
Well, they were asking for roads unless specifically you're.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, any other issues for the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
We got items for exec?
Just a few.
Okay. Can I get a motion from somebody?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for, are we going in for personnel or what reasons? Okay.
Second. So first made by Commissioner Norris, seconded by Commissioner Laird, for executive session for legal advice. All in favor?